Please take your seats, everyone. The West Hollywood City Council acknowledges that the land on which we gather and that is currently known as the city of West Hollywood is the occupied, unceded, seized territory of the Gabarino Tongva and Gabarino Kich people. I will now call this meeting to order. It is 6:01 PM. And before I do that, the city clerk, do you have an announcement?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to share for those of you watching at home that there is a technical issue that is impacting captions for tonight's meeting broadcast. This may affect viewers tuning in on Spectrum Channel 10 and the city website video link at www-weho.org/wehotv. Users of most smart TVs may turn on auto-generated captions using their TV menu settings. And all viewers can access auto-generated captions on YouTube by viewing the meeting broadcast through the city's WeHoTV YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/WeHoTV and tapping the CC button on the lower right side of the video frame. Thank you for understanding as we work to restore this service.
Thank you, city clerk. Will David Nash please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening?
Put your right hand on your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Councilmember Byers, present. Councilmember Heilmann, here. Councilmember Meister, here. Mayor Protam Erickson, here. Mayor Schein, present. We have a quorum.
Thank you. We will now move to approval of the agenda. Madam City Clerk, are there any changes from staff this evening?
No, Mayor, there are no changes from staff.
Okay. Do my colleagues have any changes?
I have a suggestion.
Okay.
That we move 6A, 6B, 6C to consent calendar.
6A, 6B, 6C to consent calendar. Are there any objections to that? No? Okay. Any other changes from my colleagues?
Sure.
Okay. Councilmember Heilmann.
I'm wondering if we can combine public hearings 3A through 3G with the exception of 3C because I believe that there are some legal requirements for that one. These are standard public hearings that we do on an annual basis, and I don't believe we typically have many speakers or any speakers at all, so...
So I think aside from 3C, which is a Prop 213 requirement, that should be okay. We'll just indicate in the record that we're opening, we're closing. I do not have any individuals signed up to speak currently for any of those items, and if the city attorney concurs, I think we're fine.
Great.
I'd also like to request that we discuss item 2U or that it be brought back at another meeting. I think that's...I think additional funding is needed for those services, so I'd like to have that conversation. But I'll give staff the option of whether they want to wait or whether they can bring that back at the next meeting.
Okay, or we can also pull it off consent and discuss it if there's a certain funding you're looking at? Or did staff want different funding?
Well, I think we need more funding, but I'll pull it from consent, and if we need to continue it to the next hearing, I'll leave that to the discretion of the city manager.
Okay. Yes, Mayor Protam?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I was wondering if we can move 5O to the consent, and that's the 2023-2024 budget discussion?
I have comments on it.
You have comments on the budget?
Yeah.
Great. What about 5A, the WeHoCares team agreements?
I have comments on that, too, sorry.
Great. What about 5C? That's the special counsel initiatives programming. It's the special counsel programs and initiatives and events, the item that was brought back. Technically, it's your term item.
I don't...I don't have...I have a question about this, but yeah.
Sure.
All right, so we are moving 6A cosponsorship of Out Loud Sports Festival to consent. 6B sponsorship of a community town hall forum with Assemblymember Rick Chavez-Zibber to consent. 6C cosponsorship of shopqueer.co and WayOut's pop-up book fairs to consent. We are combining 3A, 3B, 3D, 3E, and 3G into one hearing, one hearing 3Cs separately, and we are taking 2U off consent.
And Mayor, can I note my recusal on item 2BB, the portion involving Sim Blaze?
Noted, thank you, council member.
Yes, and Mayor, I'd like to also note my abstention on that item. Sim Blaze worked on my campaign, so I would like to not vote on that for anything for a year.
Okay.
Thank you.
If we have no other changes, is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar? Or I'm sorry, the approval of the agenda? Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move...we will now move to adjournment motions, and I will start the adjournment this evening. This past week, Esther Baum passed away at the age of 97 years old. Esther was named one of the...one of U.S. Representative Adam Schiff's 15 Women of the Year in 2020 and was my appointee to the Senior Advisory Board since I have served in the city of West Hollywood and a dear friend. She...Esther was born and raised in Los Angeles and has called West Hollywood "home" for over 30 years. Upon graduating from high school, Esther attended college and majored in accounting. With an abundance of talent and skill, Esther had a successful career spanning across decades. She worked for public accounting firms and as an accountant for several businesses, including a garment manufacturer, women's sportwear shop, a beauty salon chain, and an oral surgery practice. She retired in 2017. While Esther had a successful career, she never lost sight of the importance of volunteering and giving back to the community. Esther volunteered at a cancer center in Santa Monica where she reconstructed the files and payroll records after the building caught on fire. She also volunteered at Project Angel Food, the Maple Counseling Center in Beverly Hills, and AARP where she did tax preparation for senior citizens. Esther was a dynamic force in the community. She also served as a neighborhood watch block captain and enjoyed hosting national night-out gatherings for almost three decades. She made it a tradition to take all the remaining food to serve to the homeless. Esther was also a longtime and valued member of Congregation Colomme. I'll never forget one of my first council meetings that I attended after being appointed to Lesbian Gay Advisory Board. Esther was sitting right up here, super feisty, and she went up to the dais and was advocating for the cost of ambiance to be lowered and for transportation for our seniors to be extended to weekends and not just certain times during the week. And she had...she made the most incredible deviled eggs I have ever, ever had, a very, very giving, lovely soul. And she told me the story of her cat that she loved, that she would play piano and the cat would jump up next to her, and she would give the cat a biscuit, and she would have a coffee. And I thought it was the most incredible story. She was an incredible, incredible woman and a wonderful member of our community. She was preceded in death by her late husband, Robert, and is survived by one daughter who followed in Esther's footsteps and is an accountant. The entire West Hollywood community has benefited immensely from Esther's generosity and invaluable contributions. She was like family to many people in our West Hollywood community and will be missed by us all. And I was also told she was one of the first members and the longest...one of the longest members of the Senior Advisory Board. A public memorial service will be held on Sunday, July 9th, at 3:30 PM at Congregation Colomme located at 1200 North La Brea Avenue. The next adjournment that I have is for John O'Neill. On May 22nd, John O'Neill, Vice President of the West Hollywood Recovery Center and Law Cabin Board of Directors, passed away at the age of 61 years old, surrounded by family and close friends, following an aggressive cancer diagnosis. John O'Neill lived and worked in West Hollywood for many years. Earlier this year, he celebrated 35 years of sobriety. John will truly be missed by so many. He was an inspiration and touched many lives in the West Hollywood community. Are there other adjournments for my colleagues? Councilmember Meister?
Thank you, Mayor. The first is Carol Higgins-Clark. Carol Higgins-Clark was a West Hollywood resident. She passed on June 12th of a rare appendix cancer that affects one in a million people. Carol was a New York Times bestselling author, an actress, and a philanthropist. She was also a major donor to Project Angel Food and treasured friend and neighbor of Richard Ayoub. Our deepest sympathy to Carol's family, neighbors, and friends. I also would like to adjourn tonight in memory of Joshua Kaufman. Joshua Kaufman passed away on June 6th. According to his son-in-law, California State Senator Henry Stern, Joshua was a survivor of Dachau, died just as he lived, happy. The humility, levity, and victimlessness that buoyed him through unthinkable darkness and everyday struggle will survive in us. My condolences go out to Senator Stern and his family during this difficult time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other adjournments? Councilmember Byers, do you have any? No other adjournments from my other colleagues? Okay. We have one presentation this evening. Mayor Protam Erickson, would you like to introduce your presentation?
Sure, thank you so much, Mayor. I'm so happy to have the Clean Power Alliance representatives here. Ted, thank you for coming all the way from downtown Los Angeles. It's great to serve you with that ability now when we have to go to downtown LA to see you, so thank you for this. Clean Power Alliance celebrated their 50th...well, a very big anniversary, to say the least. And it's amazing with the work that they're doing, so we have a proclamation to celebrate you all. So whereas Clean Power Alliance, formerly known as the Los Angeles Choice Energy, is a community choice aggregator and not-for-profit entity formed through a joint powers authority, made up of participating agencies, and whereas in 2017, the city of West Hollywood joined CPA, which includes more than 30 member jurisdictions in Los Angeles and Ventura counties, and whereas the locally-controlled electricity provider in Southern California, CPA believes in a clean energy future that is local, where communities are empowered and customers are given a choice about a source of their energy, and whereas CPA purchases clean and renewable electricity and offers 100% renewable energy and the opportunity to support building a cleaner future, be an environmental champion, and lead the way for a greener future, and whereas CPA offers various scholarships and more...most recently initiated a Voyager Scholarship, which provides financial aid to students enrolled in energy-driven career pathways such as electric vehicles and advanced transportation technology, energy and environmental science, and alternative energy, and whereas taking responsibility for the environment is one of West Hollywood's core values, and as an established leader in sustainability, the city of West Hollywood values our partnership with CPA to support the city's efforts in reducing its contribution to global climate change. Now therefore let it be resolved that we recognize CPA on their memorable occasion of their fifth anniversary...I added a zero, but you'll get there eventually, and honor CPA for providing a greener renewable electricity option and its commitment to building a cleaner future for West Hollywood and cities throughout Southern California. And I would like to invite Ted and Dahlia from CPA up here to come up to the dais and accept this proclamation if my colleagues want to come with me.
So, thank you very much for the proclamation. It's been a little longer than five years because West Hollywood was one of the first cities to join then LACE, now Clean Power Alliance, back in late 2017, one of the first half dozen of our now 35 cities, so I want to thank you for that. Highlight a couple of things of interest in West Hollywood. As you probably know, your preferred energy option for your residents is 100% renewable energy, and through that, we have effectively zeroed out all carbon emissions related to electricity here in West Hollywood over the past five years, and so that's super exciting. We have brought money-saving options in rates to West Hollywood and to all of our customers across LA and Ventura counties. But what that means is today, West Hollywood residents, ratepayers, customers of ours have a choice of three rates, all of which, from the 100% renewable energy down to our cheapest-tier lean power, all of those rates are cheaper than what someone can get comparatively from Southern California Edison's. So across the board, we're saving folks money and providing those options. And the last thing I'll note is that as we've grown, gotten more established, built up some reserves, starting to be able to spend more money out in the communities, we're establishing more programs. One that I wanted to note particularly for this summer, specifically designed for renters and folks who live in multifamily housing, who often can't install advanced technologies because they have, you know, landlord or whatever, called Power Saver Home, which will send people text messages for the right time of day to save energy, and they will get paid for that. So just a way that we're trying to bring all folks into this clean energy economy. And that really is a result of what I think has been West Hollywood's leadership, is in so many areas, on regional boards, regional opportunities, you all have shown great leadership, and you had wonderful representation on our board more recently, and now with Mayor Protam Erickson and Councilmember Byers also on our board now, that just continues. So thank you for sending them our way.
Thank you.
And we'll get that going. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we will move on to public comment for this evening, the first public comment period. The city council values your comments. However, pursuant to the Brown Act, city council cannot take action on items not listed on the posted agenda. The public comment period is limited to 20 minutes with 90 seconds this evening allotted for each speaker. This public comment period is to address the city council on consent calendar items or items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Another period is also reserved for general comment later in the meeting for those that could not be heard at this time. Public hearing testimony will only be taken at the time of the public hearing. If you signed up to speak on both consent calendar items and general public comment as well as an item that was moved to the consent calendar, you may take this public comment period to speak on the consent calendar items. You may also sign up to speak during the second public comment period for your general public comment. Madam City Clerk, who is our first speaker?
Thank you, Mayor. Before I move to the speakers, I just want to say we have a very heavy agenda tonight. We are going to be reducing the public comment to 90 seconds. Legally, we have to hear consent calendar items. Anyone who doesn't get to speak in the first 20 minutes, as indicated on the agenda, will be moved to the second public comment period. So I will begin with our first speaker this evening, Steve Martin, for item 2JJ.
Good evening, Council Steve Martin, West Hollywood. I want to thank you for your support of 2JJ, the substance abuse town hall. West Hollywood's always been in the forefront of these issues, particularly back in the day when there was no programs at all for substance abuse, particularly methamphetamine. So I do appreciate that. I did have the opportunity, weekend before last, to attend the Drag Story Hour in West Hollywood Park, and I want to say, the library. It was a really joyous event. About 60 people were there, a lot of kids. It wasn't political. Amber was the reader, she was fabulous. Everyone just had a good time, and it was a lot of diverse families coming together and just having a good time. There was nothing political or ideological about it. And that was in marked difference than the April event that had demonstrators and counterdemonstrators there. And I saw the...one of the demonstrators was assaulted by a counterdemonstrator, and it's very frustrating because West Hollywood has always been a safe place to exercise people's First Amendment rights. And it's frustrating now because it seems that there's an effort to demonize the Sheriff's Department for arresting a person who assaulted somebody just because they were exercising their First Amendment rights. And I just wanted people to know that we...the community supports the sheriff, community supports First Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gerard Wright, to be followed by Darwin Rodriguez.
Took me by surprise. Good evening, honorable councilmembers. Gerard Wright, Government Affairs Director with the Greater L.A. Realtors, in support of item 2, and thanking Councilmember Heilmann for this forward-thinking idea. I mean, supporting the small business community and the business community is important for all of the community because it provides jobs, provides the safety, talks about the other issues that are important to a thriving city like West Hollywood because it is home. It is home to so many people and so many...so much diversity in the city. This is an important forward-thinking idea that we would love to partner with you on and figure out other opportunities to help out. I know there's an issue on homelessness that, for example, and I think we covered it at another meeting, you know, the...for the business committee and other local cities are now getting their fair share of Measure H dollars, and this might be an opportunity to also address this in this conversation because, you know, taking care of the homeless also relates to community safety, community value, the whole nine yards. So this is wonderful to talk about, wonderful to speak on, and I'd love to be part of that conversation. So I will not take the full 90 seconds and say thank you.
Thank you, Gerard. Our next speaker is Darwin Rodriguez, to be followed by Felicia Halarrio.
Hi, my name is Darwin Rodriguez. I'm a program manager at the Institute for Public Strategies. We run the West Hollywood Project. We focus on substance use prevention. So I'm here today asking for the use of city council chambers as well as support for a town hall on fentanyl, methamphetamine, and xylazine. So we've gotten some partnership with the County of Los Angeles, specifically Dr. Sid Perry, who is the Associate Medical Director for Prevention in the Substance Abuse Prevention and Control Division of LA County's Department of Public Health. We've also gotten support from a staff member who will be speaking at the event from the County Department of Health Services, specifically from their Harm Reduction Division. So, you know, this promises to be a really interactive event for anyone in the West Hollywood community to learn about fentanyl, methamphetamine, and xylazine, where we'll also provide resources and education and training so that people are armed with the resources and education that they need to keep themselves and their community safer. Thank you.
Thank you, Darwin. Our next speaker is Felicia Halarrio, to be followed by Brian Riesley.
Good evening. Good evening. I am a proud resident of West Hollywood and a member of the Writers Guild. I've been a member for six years. Our guild includes 11,500 members, and we have been on strike since May 2nd. We are fighting for issues that this city council has also fought for, which is sustainable jobs, working conditions, and fair compensation for the content we create, most importantly on the streaming platforms that we all enjoy so much. We know this fight has broader implications for the entertainment industry, and we are setting a path for the actors, the trucks, the crew, and even... and we are setting a path for the actors, the trucks, the crew, and even the janitors. This is what we're trying to do. AI can regurgitate information, and perhaps even a story, but it cannot understand the nuance of human emotion, of love, or of loss. And that is what we can do as humans, and that is what we wish to bring to you. Because as one of the writers said, AI has never had childhood trauma. So we thank Councilman Byers and the entire City Council for standing with the writers and bringing forward this resolution. We'll continue to pick it for as long as we can, and we thank the incredible solidarity of this community for joining us on the lines. We are one day longer and one day stronger. Thank you.
Thank you, Felicia. Our next speaker is Brian Riesley, to be followed. Brian Riesley?
Good evening, City Councilmembers. So just to follow up on my partner, Darwin Rodriguez, I just wanted to bring to attention a public health alert that was issued by LA County recently, and this is on xylaxine as an illicit drug that's increasing the risk for overdose. I don't know how many are aware that xylaxine is now showing up in street drugs, in methamphetamine, and all the breast pills, in cocaine, and any powdered substance. It's a cheaply-produced depressant, and unfortunately, if you're administering a Narcon dose, let's say intranasally for fentanyl, if someone also has xylaxine in their drug, they will not respond to Narcan. So the fentanyl test strips are great, Narcon is great, but with the increasing presence of xylaxine, we have a new real problem with street drugs. So these are things we will address in this town hall, and so I really appreciate that you've confirmed and consented to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Before we move to general public comment, I do have a citizen position slip in support of item 200 from Alberto Munoz. David Nash, you are our next speaker, to be followed by Rick Watts.
Thank you. David Nash, West Hollywood resident. I owe each and every one of you a heartfelt thanks on the council. A few weeks ago, I sent an email out, kind of waving a red flag of concern about a neighbor who had become suddenly and severely disabled, and whose dwelling was not equipped with grab bars, fold-down seat in the bathtub, handheld shower, the basics that someone with a severe disability would need to function at home. Every one of you responded to my email on a Sunday afternoon. I was impressed that you're all working seven days a week, and I thank you all for your response. Appropriate staff at the city followed up on the issues last, pardon me, the week after. And at least two meetings were set up between management, our onsite social worker, and city staff, so that hopefully, in the future, when people have a sudden and catastrophic dip in their health, things can be brought in that are needed in a more timely manner. And sadly, I just want to say that we do need to have a plan beyond being safe at home to look at catastrophic issues.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rick Watts, to be followed by Lucian Tudor.
Good evening. Thank you, Council. Rick Watts, City of West Hollywood. Just following on comments on our friend and neighbor Esther Baum. I'm sure there are many people in the audience and who may be viewing this tonight that may not have been particularly familiar with Esther, but at her advanced age, not surprisingly, Esther was also disabled. It's not at all uncommon to see Esther nonetheless at council meetings on her walker. I was occasionally given her rides home after council, or down here for that matter. And despite her age and her disability, as was noted, she nonetheless still was block captain for our neighborhood watch, which, thanks in no small part to Esther, has endured these 30 years. Esther understood very much through her work with the disabled community and Project Angel Food and so forth, that all of these struggles, whether for seniors or persons with disabilities, public safety, housing, in the words of Cleve Jones, it's one struggle, one fight. This is all related. And so we all owe a deep debt of gratitude for Esther Baum. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Our next speaker is Lucian Tudor, to be followed by Barbara Tenzer.
Good evening, Council and Mayor Shane. My name is Lucian Tudor. I represent La Bohem, a proud member of WeHo community for 32 years. Since our last time here, we've been harassed by code enforcement with many unreasonable requests. One of the most unreasonable was the removal of our outdoor temporary restrooms that serve our temporary outdoor dining. Ironically, for almost three years, we have had an application into the planning department, seeking an extension for our restrooms, as would be expected of our business to provide for our guests in the city's best interest. Over that time, there was little response, no sense of urgency has been shown, no accountability in addressing your request. At the same time, I want to speak about your superficiality, especially Mayor Sepe Shine, supporting the Defund Police Movement, which resulted in lack of stability and civic well-being of our city. You reduced the number of deputies in October 2022. To ensure a more appropriate law enforcement, you hired block-by-block security ambassadors. Their presence has been a complete failure. A month ago at La Bohem, there were an armory robbery. Since then, we've been vandalized five times. Five times. This is unacceptable for all of us.
Thank you, Mr. Tudor. Our next speaker is Barbara Tenzer, to be followed by Todd Hallman.
No, and we need to limit you to 90 seconds. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor. Mayor, I met you in Mandeville Canyon. We talked briefly about Santa Monica. I'm going to talk really fast. My name is Barbara Tenzer. I was asked to come here tonight and advocate for businesses and restaurants, because the policies coming from this council are hurting the businesses. Mayor, you said I always put equity and equality for each and every person in the center of my service, and that's exactly what I'll do in Congress. And all of you say that you're fighters for affordability and economic opportunity. I'm sorry to say that each one of you, that this statement does not appear true. It's a bit of an illusion at this point. I don't know who you're listening to, but you're not listening to the businesses. I'm here to talk about two issues. One is the ambassadors. We have them in Santa Monica. They don't work. It's been 20 years. You, getting rid of the sheriff or reducing the sheriff is not working here. The second thing is the minimum wage. You're very proud of having the highest minimum wage in the US. Businesses have cried out to you that the wage is too high, especially in the restaurant business, where services are receiving tips. I don't know who's controlling you guys, but in Santa Monica, it's large companies and it's unions, and you need to start listening to the individual people. Please take a deep breath and rethink your positions. Everyone makes mistakes. Please listen to the businesses. And by the way, my family are immigrants, too. A lot of them came from Nazi Germany. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Our next speaker is Todd Hallman, to be followed by Anthony Reed DeGenio.
Good evening, Mayor Shane, Mayor Protem Erickson, and Councilmembers. My name is Todd Hallman. I am a 35-year West Hollywood resident, the WeHo East Neighborhood Watch Captain, and Chair of your Public Safety Commission. I'm here tonight. I have had a couple of sidebar conversations with several of you about my disappointment over what we presented on Juneteenth. Last year, I thought we did a beautiful job. I was a proud queer black resident to speak at last year's ceremony. This year, to say it paled in comparison is nothing. Councilmember Meister, thank you for being there. You were the only one there from council. I know other council members had other commitments. You know, David Wilson, City Manager, I would have loved to have seen you. To say we did a terrible job is an understatement. I was insulted, I was embarrassed, and I was offended. However, moving forward, I think we can learn and do better. So I would like to propose that next year, council enacts a host committee that can work in conjunction with staff to help plan this event. We need more people of color involved. This is important to me. I want this to be a success, and I hope you consider my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Mr. DeGenio will be our last speaker. Everyone else will be moved to the second public comment period.
Good evening, City Council and Mrs. Mayor. My name is Anthony DeGenio. I've been a resident of West Hollywood since 1994. Many years ago, I gave a considerable donation to Sal Guiero to his veterans memorial. I've always enjoyed volunteering, such as reading to the children at our library, building homes for the homeless, or feeding them, which I do every day, including the police and fire. A few years ago, I came up with an idea to have a hot dog cart company. I presented it to you, and you approved. The American dream once again came true, and I thank you dearly. I come here before you today to ask politely for your consideration to allow me to participate in special events. I know food vendors in the past have been stigmatized due to people like the Bacon Rat Bandits, who cook raw bacon on rutsy trays, serving up some hot botulism for only $10. But when you're legal in the real world, it's a $30,000 to $50,000 investment, which the majority of restaurateurs aren't able to produce, and that's why I'm the only one. Obtaining a health department, health permit is very difficult. Having a five-star rating on Yelp is proof that I am a smooth operator, and I think we should all be proud. I believe I represent the city well, diffusing fights, returning wallets, cell phones, sobering them up, getting them home safely. If you visit my Instagram, you'll see a level of excitement and joy through our customer experience. That only encourages them to come back, and again and again, with hundreds asking me, why don't you participate in special events? Bringing that to my superiors' attention, there's no justification, only that we need to change the law. There is no reason behind it, only that we need to change the law. So it hurts when I'm not able to participate. One other sneak in, not only does it feel discriminatory, but emotionally and financially devastating. I do believe the city wants the best for all of us, and it may be just an oversight. So please consider...
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor, that was 20 minutes.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Erickson has a question for...
Thank you. David, I understand one of the public commentators talked about a permit in process for three-plus years. This is the first time I'm hearing about, second, actually. I think someone tweeted me. But Oscar, Jackie, and John Kehoe are here, so could they go talk to Lucian? And could you provide us a report back, not anytime soon, because I'm sure you won't be able to get it that soon, but later on in the meeting, about what's going on with their restroom, or whatever is going on, so we could understand the facts?
Yeah, we can provide a full report later. But staff has been working with La Bohem. The restroom wasn't part of their original outzone, so staff is working with them on the permit process, and it's taking longer than what the business would like. So we will continue to work with them, and we'll provide the council an update. Excuse me. Just a few other comments related to Juneteenth. The Social Justice Task Force, or, I'm sorry, Social Justice Advisory Board will be part of planning Juneteenth in the future. The advisory board hasn't been established yet, and so they weren't part of that this year. But I do think staff did a great time, great job of planning the event. But we'll work with the Social Justice Task Force on promoting it and other ideas for the event in the future. That was all for the comments. Just a few announcements. The July Human Services Commission meeting will feature a training from Being Alive on how and when to administer Narcan. Community members are invited to attend the meeting and receive training Tuesday, July 11, at 6:00 PM in Plummer Park, Rooms 5 and 6. The city invites community members to participate in one of two meetings on updating the city's hazard mitigation plan. That will be in person on Wednesday, June 28, at 6:00 PM in the Arc, or Thursday, July 13, virtually. For more information, please contact the Community Safety Department, or email safety@weho.org. And then lastly, the Sheriff's Station will be hosting a catalytic converter etching event on Saturday, July 8, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, located at the PDC Red Building. For questions, please contact the city's Community Safety Department at safety@weho.org. And that concludes my comments, Mayor.
Thank you.
Yes, I have two questions of the city manager.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So, and they have to do with the consent calendar. Item 2Z, which is the school crossing guards, it said in the staff report that the number of crossing guards at WeHo Elementary went from one to three during the pandemic because of social distancing. And the item is for approval of three crossing guards. So I just didn't understand if we're out of the pandemic, if it was necessary to have three, or maybe we could try two, just something to think about there, and maybe you can shed some light on that. And then, item 2FF, it's the memo agreement on the Bologna Creek watershed. I just wanted to ask you if that outcome was a good outcome. I remember when this came before us, I think it was 2015 or 2016, and it was a very, very large sum of money that they were talking about. It seems to me that this is a reasonable amount of money, but I just kind of want to get your take on it. Thank you.
Can you provide updates on both of those? We'll provide updates later on both of those.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, moving on to the fiscal impact on consent calendar, what is the fiscal impact on tonight's consent calendar?
Thank you, Mayor. The fiscal impact on tonight's consent calendar with the addition of items 6A, 6B, and 6C, and the removal of item 2U, is $8,3590 in expenditures, $1,01224 in revenue, and $1,100 in waived fees. We have a motion to adopt the consent calendar. The consent calendar passes.
Thank you. We are going to move to 3C first.
Actually, Mayor, I have to clarify for the record. 3A is our Prop 218 hearing. So we'll read from our script that indicates 3C, and then we'll hear 3B, 3C, 3D, 3E, 3F, 3G, as a, is that combined?
I think you said 3C. We're going to do 3A first.
3A first, correct.
That's the one. That's the Prop 218 hearing.
Yeah, it's a little more detailed.
So we'll do 3A first, and then 3C, and then the combined ones?
So in your red folder with the scripts, the one that indicates 3C is 3A.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
That's the...
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes.
Okay. In that case, we will now hear a public hearing, item 3A, a resolution of the City Council of the City of West Hollywood adopting increases to sewer service charges. The public hearing is now open. Madam City Clerk, how was this hearing noticed?
So first, the city attorney has to read the Prop 218 language into the record.
Okay. I'll answer that question this time. This public hearing was set in compliance with Proposition 218. The city mailed a notice of this public hearing to every record owner whose property is subject to the imposition of the proposed sewer charges, since sewer charges are placed on the property tax roll for collection. since sewer charges are placed on the property tax roll for collection. The date and time of this hearing is not less than 45 days after the city mailed the notice. The purpose of the public hearing is for the city council to hear all oral testimony and consider all written protests concerning the proposed rate increase. It is also held to determine whether there's a majority protest to the proposed charges and whether to proceed with the adoption of the charges. Property owners are not required to provide oral testimony at today's hearing. If they wish, they may submit a written protest directly to the city clerk indicating their opposition to the proposed rate increase. In order for their protest to be counted, they must submit a written protest prior to the close of the hearing. The public hearing will be closed after the city council has heard and considered oral testimony. Oral comments today do, are not counted as written protests. If written protests against the proposed rate increases are presented by a majority of the owners of the identified parcels upon which the charge will be imposed, the city council may not impose the rate increase. If there is no majority protest, the city council may impose the rate increase. Pursuant to state law governing Prop 218 and determining whether a majority protest exists, only one protest per parcel may be counted. Thank you. How was, so did we get how this hearing was noticed? So, okay. Will the staff representative please introduce yourself and present the staff report?
Good evening. I'm John Gilmore, city engineer for the city. This item 3A is regarding the sewer service charges. The city owns, operates, and maintains a sewer system to the public. This obviously costs money. It is paid for by collecting a fee from every property on their annual property tax bill. Every year, the fee is adjusted for inflation to keep up with rising costs. The city, per state law requirements, conducts the approval process, and we do it in multi-year increments. It's now time for another approval that will carry us forward through 2027. And per state law, the ballots were sent out, and we received 103 protest ballots out of 9,826, which represents 1%. So since this is less than the majority, council can proceed with the adoption of the new rates.
Do my colleagues have any questions for staff?
If there are no public speakers, I would move that we close the public hearing and adopt.
There are no public speakers, and as John indicated, we only received 103 protest ballots as of 6 o'clock PM.
Okay. I'll second that motion. Or somebody else sitting. Great. We will now move to the combined hearing for 3B, 3D, 3.
3B, 3C.
3C, so 3C is not 3A, that's what you said earlier.
Right. So 3B, 3C, 3D. And then we'll switch staff members for 3E, 3F, and 3G.
Got it, okay. So 3B, 3P, 3C, and 3D. Collection of sewer charges on tax roll for fiscal year 2023. Public hearing on rate increases to sewer service charges, placement of delinquent solid waste fees on the property tax bill of property owners. The public hearing is now open. How was this hearing noticed?
All hearings were noticed as required by law. And for these particular ones, we actually do the posting 30 days in advance, and it stays up for two consecutive meetings.
Thank you. Will the staff representative please introduce yourself and present the staff report?
Good evening again, John Gilmore, city engineer. So the three hearings here before us, the first one, collection of sewer charges on tax roll. This is what we just heard, and now we will formally put it on the tax roll. So it's the increases, and this is the movement to now put it on the tax bill. The next one, 3C, is the solid waste rates. So the city has a contract of Athens for solid waste and recycling services. Most recent amendment was passed last year. Terms go to 2037. Per that contract, Athens' rates will increase by inflation each year. Also, the city has a portion of their, the fee that will also increase by inflation. There's a second charge for Athens that also increases each year per contract based on the big organics law that passed, and we negotiated that contract last year. So the cost of the program is collected again based on the type of property. So residential's one through four units. They will pay everything on the tax bill. Residential 5+ will pay Athens directly, the Athens bill, and pay the city portion on the tax bill. And commercial pays Athens directly. So this is the public hearing where council will approve those increases that are part of the contract for placement on the tax bill. The third hearing is the delinquent solid waste. So again, with Athens here, part of the contract stipulations prevent Athens from stopping service to multifamily so that we protect the tenants in case that the owner does not pay. And so every year, there's a couple where they, the bills go delinquent. And so part of our provisions allow for that delinquency to be put on the tax roll where it has success in being paid. And so the item for you here is this year's list of delinquencies. As of today, we have only 11 delinquencies. So that's the memo that you received, the most current list, that would then be placed on the tax roll. And that concludes the three.
Do my colleagues have any questions from, for staff at all? No. Are there any public speakers?
We have no public speakers for any of these items.
Okay. Since there's no public speakers, shall we move these items?
I'll ask Melissa. We took them all together, but if, if it's easier for us to move these three items now and wait for the staff report on the others, that's fine.
Yeah, we'll move these three. Lauren, should I read the title of the resolutions into the record, or do you think we're okay?
I think it's okay. They're posted on the agenda.
Perfect. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. And items 3A, 3B, 3C, 3D, all passed. 5-0. So now we will move to 3E, 3F, and 3G, which have to do with the city's business improvement districts.
Wonderful. The public hearing is now open. Madam City Clerk, how was this hearing noticed?
As required by law.
Will the staff representative please introduce yourself and present the staff reports, please?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. My name is Taylor Coyne. I'm the Business Development Manager, joined by Laura Byrie, our Director of Economic Development. We're presenting 3E, 3F, and 3G. 3E and 3F are both the reestablishments of our business-based bids. So we are reestablishing the Design District and the Sunset Strip bid. There are no changes to the boundaries or the assessments for this year. 3G is regarding the Santa Monica Boulevard Maintenance District. That's our property-based bid. That benefits all of the property owners along Santa Monica. They pay into a bid primarily for our holiday lights. All three of these also include amendment to the existing contracts. 3G for Decker Light to do the holiday lights for this coming fiscal year, amending the contract to extend for one year and not to exceed amount. For both business bids, include amendments to our contracts with the Chamber of Commerce, so they can administer the bids for one additional year. And we are here to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff at all, for my colleagues? Councilmember Heilman?
Mayor, not a question, just a comment. The Sunset Strip bid, the materials that you submitted to us, it showed them promoting Summer on Sunset by posting things on light poles, which we don't allow. So we might want to talk to them about that. And then also, I just hope in the upcoming year there'll be more emphasis on music and the music venues on Sunset, because that's a very important part of our heritage here in West Hollywood. So, thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thanks. On page 22 and 3F, the Sunset Strip bid talks about they want to get back to producing an event for the Sunset Strip. And that kind of piggybacks off of what Councilmember Heilman said. I, I don't want to talk about the Sunset Strip Music Festival, but I know that did help with a lot of the clubs and the famous places up on the Sunset Strip. So I didn't know if we had any inkling of what they are thinking, if it's too early to tell, but if those things could be brought to us earlier so we could help with any fee waivers or anything like that that we could do as a city. Because I do agree that I think that that is a, a good thing that they're doing. And I think to have that rejuvenation over there with them will, will help. If you, if they've told you what they're doing, you can tell us. But I, by the look on your face, I'm guessing the answer is no.
They're still in the planning phases, but we can report that message back and circle back so they know it. Not as part of their annual event, but I will say that they are working or in collaboration with the Doors event, their annual, you know, that festivities for next year. Again, whether or not it's combined, but we will report back and share your messages.
I believe we have two speakers for this.
We do, and they're both in Zoom. So we will have, I believe Genevieve signed up to speak on all three items, so she'll have to combine it. And she, two minutes, yeah, two minutes, Janet.
So our first speaker this evening on this item is Genevieve Morrell. Genevieve, please press star six to unmute, and you'll have two minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council, Genevieve Morrell, President and CEO of the West Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. Thank you so much for hearing this item every year. We're very excited. The Design District certainly has activated much quicker, and we are doing mixers and events, and we're gearing up for our 75th anniversary. Sunset Strip, as Taylor said, we're working on our Doors exhibit, so we're looking at locations for that next year, which will be incredible, and looking at kind of hand-painted doors in different configuration, door being symbolic of different, could be a physical door or a, a door of some other place. And we're going to look at that around the city, similar to like we had for Guitar Town. We are working on the planning for Legends of Sunset to get to you, and as well as we're looking at some sort of pub crawl. So, and Councilmembers Erickson and Heilman, thank you so, Mayor Protem, Erickson, and Heilman, thank you so much for your suggestions. Councilmember Heilman, I don't know if I wrote that in the annual report, but I think we only posted for a photo op on the polls. I don't think we actually posted on any of the polls, the flyers. It was just for a photo that we did, so apologies for that. But yeah, we are looking to activate the Strip a lot more. We tried the rink. It was a very hot summer. And so we, we're kind of going to revisit that and look at something more music-related, as Councilmember Heilman mentioned. So we thank you again for all your support, and we look forward to seeing you at many of our programs and events.
Thank you, Genevieve. Our next speaker on these items is Greg Rang. Greg, you will have two minutes. Please press star six to unmute yourself. Greg, go ahead. Greg, please press star six to unmute yourself. There you go. Mayor, he may be having some audio issues, so I don't know if you want to.
Okay, well, if that's the case, then let's go ahead and move forward. Are there any deliberations with my colleagues for this? I see we have a motion to adopt by Councilmember Heilman and seconded by Councilmember Erickson. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, the public testimony portion of the public hearing is now closed before we do the vote officially.
That, that was part of the motion.
It was part of the motion. Part of the motion. We closed the public hearing. Okay, great. Now we will move on to public hearing, item 3H, request to permit modification of an existing tall wall at 9201 Sunset Boulevard. The public hearing is now open. Are there any disclosures from council members? Nope.
I met with the applicant and discussed items in the staff report and visited the site.
Okay. Councilmember Heilman, do you have any disclosures?
I also had a meeting with the applicant on Zoom.
Okay.
I met with the applicant on Zoom as well, and I visited the site. Thanks.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any disclosures. Okay. So, Madam City Clerk, how was this hearing noticed?
As required by law. And Mayor, we're going to have to conduct this via Zoom because Jennifer Davis, the planner on, for this item, will be on Zoom. So we'll be doing the entire item through Zoom.
Okay.
Staff's just getting the presentation ready. Olivia, do you mind coming and helping?
Thank you.
Should we take a break while we get this set up?
Sure.
All right, let's take a five-minute break. We'll come back at 7:15. Or, wait, 7, 7:12. Please return to your seats. We will be resuming our meeting. Madam City Clerk, are we ready to go to the Zoom presentation?
Staff is ready to rock and roll.
Excellent.
They're in Zoom and have it up.
Wonderful. Let's go ahead and start.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's Brian Leeg with Property Development. With me, I have Jennifer Alkire and John Keigho with our Planning Division. The item you have before you tonight is a review of a conditional use permit for a modified tall wall, a zoning map amendment to place the property in a development agreement overlay zone, and a development agreement which details the approvals and vested rights of the project. The Planning Commission at their April 20 hearing recommended approval to the City Council with respect to the project's requested entitlements, and made two requests for the City Council to consider. First being, is the proposed public benefit sufficient? And second, to consider the ability to dim the lights which downlight the tall wall. Staff has included the second item, the condition of dimming the lights on the tall wall, as a condition of the approval. For the context, the project is located on the north side of Sunset at the intersection of Doherty Road, just west of Corey Avenue. The current use of the building is an existing nine-story medical office tower with an existing tall wall granted by a conditional use permit from 2003. The existing tall wall is just over 5,000 square feet. Tall walls are distinguished from billboards, and they are no, they are larger, not internally lit, less readable at night, and have a longer run for content. Tall walls can be placed on solid walls or facades with window curtain walls. Solid walls read better, have a higher resolution. Window curtain walls are perforated wraps which allow visibility from the inside and the interior, but greatly reduce the visibility of the tall wall at night. Under the current policy, tall walls have a minimum size of 5,000 square feet and no maximum size. The proposed tall wall measures 9,150 square feet and wraps the building. East facade, which is a solid facade, will be reduced by 2,000 square feet. And the south facade, which will now include 6,000 square feet over the first three window bays. Part of the size on this facade was dictated by the column width between the window bays. The policy encourages tall walls to wrap building corners to create visible interests and limits the advertising to one campaign. The request for the modification from, came from the applicant due to an obstruction caused by a new digital billboard at 9157 Sunset. The billboard policy allows for modification to existing tall walls through a requested amendment. And here's a couple images I just want to share. The image, this is the westbound from Sunset at 300 feet from the existing tall wall and showing the impact of that 9157 digital board. Here's an image of the existing tall wall with its dimensions, it's somewhat of a portrait orientation. The proposed tall wall wraps, as I said, it wraps the building, and there is some symmetry between the wrap. The proposed tall wall, it's shorter, it's probably 20 feet shorter, it's higher up on the building, and of course, it's on the three, first three window bays on Sunset. I wanted to just go over the site plan quickly. The blue is the existing tall wall, and what this shows is there's three downlights on the existing tall wall. Proposed tall wall that wraps the red portion has four downlights, and the existing tall wall, a downlight has been removed, and those downlights will be now required to be dimmable. Here's an existing view from eastbound showing the 9157 and the tall wall. An existing view from westbound into the city. And now for community benefits. The current tall wall provides no community financial benefit to the city. What we're proposing in this development agreement is approximately $200,000 per year, and it's broken down into a public benefit payment, an extraordinary public benefit payment, public realm enhancement payment for improvements on Sunset, and finally, a 1% to the arts payment, which is approximately, which is $200,000 per year. And these are the public benefits that we're proposing, which are, would be new to the project, new to the billboard. And with that, that's staff's presentation. Our recommendation is to adopt the resolution ordinance approving the conditional use permit. There's zoning permit amendment in the development agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Do my colleagues have any questions for staff? Councilmember Meister?
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. So, the staff report says that this is an alternative project under the Sunset billboard policy. How, aren't those projects usually include a community meeting and a design review meeting? Design review subcommittee meeting?
I'm going to let John...
So, the answer to that is no. This is a slightly different type of project than the ones that we're familiar with that we've been calling alternative projects that have been going to the Planning Commission. Those were all projects that were able to apply through a competition process. And so, all of those had digital billboards or some other new billboard aspect. And so, those were part of a competition that we set up a special subcommittee of the Planning Commission to review. And depending on the projects, they may not have a neighborhood meeting because the neighborhood meeting requirement is really for a larger construction project, and sometimes these projects are just the signs themselves. This one, however, is a different type of project. The Sunset-specific plan Arts and Advertising section has a provision that's specific to tall walls. And I'll just read that section. It says, "Modification to tall walls. Existing tall wall signs may be modified to reallocate existing sign area to change the proportions, orientation, and location of the sign with the approval of a development agreement." So, it was anticipated that we might have tall walls that were all on one side of a building wanting to modify it, and so we didn't add any additional neighborhood meeting requirements for that since there's no construction activity associated with this.
When, when a tall wall was done before we had this policy, a new tall wall, would it have a community meeting? Did it used to have a community meeting?
I don't believe so because they were approved as a CUP, not as a development permit, because there's no construction activity. Our neighborhood meetings are really about construction activity.
Okay. And then, you mentioned that the, that the policy does, does account for modification, but isn't, is, the size of this project is much larger than the original, is that right? Isn't it like 80% larger?
It is much larger. It's 40% larger. I think it goes from 5,000 to, 80% larger, you're correct. It's an alternative project by definition.
Right, I understand. But in our, in our policy, alternative projects do get reviewed, even though I understand that it didn't go through the competition, because it's, it's under this policy. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm throwing around my printed-out policy, Sunset policy. So, we, on, on projects that we've seen more recently under, under this policy, typically we get a 20% revenue share or a minimum annual guaranteed payment, whatever is greater. Why is this fixed?
We had dressed, we had a number of discussions with, with the applicant's team, and we valued the project as we do every billboard project, and we discovered, and we, I mean, the fact was from our valuation, it was going to, the delta between the value and its current value was $122,000 in the first year. And we thought about we could escalate the $122,000 like we had the other projects at 3%, or we discussed just going through a flat fee and increasing that flat fee to $200,000 per year, which would entitle the city more funds upfront, and, you know, it'd be prepaying some of that fee over the life of the 30-year development agreement. I think we did do the math, you know, and $200,000 per year at a flat fee is, is a greater benefit to the city than an escalation at that delta, at the $122,000 per year.
Okay. And does, does the tall wall meet the required design standards in the Sunset billboard policy? For example, do the windows comprise no more than 15% of the image area?
I believe so, if you look at the full building.
I think they're covering more of the windows than what that policy has, and so that's part and parcel of what they're requesting as part of this development agreement, that they cover more of the windows.
Okay, is that in the findings?
I believe so.
Okay. And then, you have a 50% threshold for continually occupied. Is that the same policy that we've had for new billboard projects that have come before us?
Yes.
50%?
Yes.
Okay. And, and question for Lauren Langer. Can you confirm that there is language in the, in the development agreement that the applicant acknowledges that views are not protected or may be potentially blocked in the future?
Yes. Section 3.4.5 talks about obstruction in the development agreement, and it says, "This agreement does not confer upon the owner a right to an unobstructed view of the permitted sign."
And was that in previous language?
That's in every development agreement.
But what about, wouldn't, when this wasn't a development agreement, when this was a CUP, was that language in the CUP?
It probably was not included as a standard condition of approval for a CUP many years ago.
Okay. And just one last question, thank you for indulging me. Did the applicant provide public comment at the hearings that took place for the billboard that they are saying will block their tall wall?
I don't think we remember if they spoke or not.
Okay, because maybe had they spoken up during public hearings, that could have been avoided.
I think they're here, so they could certainly respond to that.
Okay, maybe Jeff can answer that question. Thank you. That's it for now. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Meister. Any other questions for my other colleagues?
Mayor, I did have a question. Just to clarify the financing, with these tall walls, we typically are now using an outside company to value how much it's worth, and then negotiating based on how much the consultant indicates that the tall wall is, is worth, correct?
Correct, and this is our third tall wall that's, we have a revenue share.
Okay. And some of the, the ones that we've done previously, as I recall, we've done it with a, a lower dollar amount with escalation over time, but in this one, the city manager negotiated at a higher upfront amount and making it consistent over the time.
Correct.
But according to the consultant's value, we're capturing the full amount of value that would be consistent with the other signs we've negotiated.
Over the life of the agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have any, actually, there's an applicant or the representative we should address the City Council?
Yes, Mayor, we have Jeff Seymour here on behalf of the applicant, Ben Anderson, the architect for the applicant, and Spencer Kalik, who is the attorney representing the applicant. Jeff?
Mayor Shine, members of the council. My name is Jeff Seymour. With Seymour Consulting Group, I reside in Westlake Village. First and foremost, we want to thank staff for the input and assistance they've given. This has been a long, long discussion. On behalf of my client, Manny Brothers Real Estate Group, we appreciate your consideration of our request to relocate a portion of our existing east-facing tall wall to the building's front face along Sunset Boulevard. For the record, the tall wall was in operation at the time the Manny Brothers purchased the building back in 2003. Present conditions at the site have negatively impacted the Present conditions at the site have negatively impacted the tall wall's viability as a creative sign, as well as causing a substantial loss in revenue. The relocation will no doubt improve the existing conditions at the subject site, providing new opportunities to produce innovative single ad campaigns that integrate both the east face and the south facade at 9201. Relocation will also, for the first time, provide the city an opportunity to receive ongoing revenue as conditioned in the project's development agreement. At this point, Ben Anderson, our architects at Office Untitled, will take the floor for your information. Spencer Kalik at Allen Mackens is available to discuss the development agreement. Chris Steinbacher from Outfront Media is available to discuss the signage operations. And Don Hollingsworth, our lighting consultant from Dark Horse Light Works, is available to respond to questions. Thank you.
So Ben, before you get, I just want to share that the applicant's given a total of five minutes.
That's correct.
Thank you.
My name is Ben Anderson with Office Untitled, the designer on this project, resident of Studio City. We know you have a very packed agenda, and just wanted to address a couple of specific questions that had arisen around the sign technology for the new area on the south face of the office building. That would be the, the film that's applied directly to the glass windows and the mullions. The best example that we can give is the signage that is currently placed at the 9,000 Sunset Building, which I'm trying to pull up here. And wanted to offer you both a daytime view of what this signage technology provides, as well as the nighttime. So during the day, the, the read is, as you can see, fairly clear. It does not need to be illuminated. And at night, because of the occupants within the, the primary use of the building for office use, the image is degraded significantly, even with the use of uplighting. I did just want to add one note. John, thank you for your report, but the lighting is uplighting. It's not downlighting. It's mounted on the, the building roof and facing up. So this was just a, a small example of what's currently in place within the city on the Sunset Strip, using the same proposed technology. And with that, I'll leave it for questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Nope. There are no questions. We will now receive comment from any person. Yes. Oh, yes. Okay. Mayor Protam has a question for the city attorney.
Thank you. Lauren, I just wanted you to correct the record that on the staff presentation, it said approve a digital billboard. This is a static billboard. It's a tall wall, correct?
That's, that's correct. It must have been a typo on the PowerPoint presentation.
No worries. Just making sure. Thank you.
Mayor, can I ask Jeff the question that I asked about if someone? Hi, Jeff.
Councilmember, how are you?
Did, did anyone speak up during the public hearings for the other project, the one that is blocking the tall wall? Did anyone from your group speak up? Not at public, not, not at planning commission and not at city council?
No.
Okay. Why not?
Well, I, I, they, we, there was, there has been communication. It's, it's a little tough for me legally to say anything more than that, but there was no discussion. The Mannys did not bring up the 9157 building either at, or the billboard, either, either at planning commission or city council.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Does applicant or, we will now receive comment from any persons in the audience who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the city council for a maximum of two minutes. And if you haven't already, please submit your speaker slip to the city clerk. Do we have public speakers?
Thank you, Mayor. We have one individual in Zoom who would like to speak.
Thank you.
Our speaker in Zoom on this item is Genevieve Morale. Genevieve, you will have two minutes. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor and the council members. Genevieve Morale, President/CEO for the West Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. I'll be brief. We want to support this tall wall application with any business, and it is a business that needs to change and adjust with the times, whether location, size, technology, we have to adjust. Also, I came to discover, you all know, we've been working on our Centennial coffee table book, and through our research, we discovered that West Hollywood was once again a first. We were the first pre-cityhood to create tall walls. Amazing. So yes, a movie studio reached out to a business owner, I think it was either Playboy or Peterson. I don't have my notes in front of me, but the first tall wall was born in West Hollywood. I think it also should go without saying that these development properties, Manny Brothers, these development developers, have shown a commitment to the city over the last two decades. They haven't just developed properties that went away, and I think that means something in West Hollywood. They continue to give back to the community, and so also has the entitled design team as well. So we hope you approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Genevieve. Mayor, that was our only speaker in Zoom.
Thank you. Does the applicant or their representative wish to make any further comments? You can have a maximum of two minutes for rebuttal.
Only that we hope you'll support this project.
Thank you. All right. I will now close the public testimony portion of the public hearing, and we will move to council deliberations.
Mayor, I just had one question for staff, and it's sort of a follow-up to Councilmember Meister's question. I, I thought we had, if not a formal policy, at least an informal one, that we would tend not to approve new signs that block other signs. So I guess my question, you know, I think Lauren was asking, why didn't the, the applicant object to the new sign? I guess my question is, why was that permitted if it was going to block the existing tall wall?
So I don't think that we thought it was going to block the tall wall. We do require that ever all applications submit view, view corridors and that type of thing, so we can try to analyze that. I don't think, our review of it, that it was going to cause an impact, but that's our point of view, not the owner's point of view. And it's, it's not a requirement. It's just something that we ask all the applicants to provide because we know this is going to be an issue, and so we try to get ahead of it. But in this one...
Thank you.
Mayor Protam?
Thank you so much. John, on page six in the staff report, I know we've talked about this before, but the piece that is delineated against the advertisement, that is a different color. I know you've prepared condition language, I think, if my colleagues accept that, to make sure that that separates. I, I don't, I'm not enthralled by the image kind of breaking there. I understand it would be blocked by the billboard in that way, but as long as that's a condition to separate it from the ad space, so that ad space isn't taken on, I support this project. I, I think it is what it is. I remember when this item, this billboard came before us a few years ago, I went back and looked at some of those present, the, the images that you gave us, and I didn't see it blocking then as well. So I understand where you're coming to us now, but just as long as that's conditioned so it doesn't fall into the continuous piece of the advertisement, I, I'm happy to support this project and whatever else my colleagues would like to say.
Other colleagues? Any comments? Yeah, Councilmember Meister, go ahead.
I have, I have comments. I didn't know if you wanted other people to go first, since I...
Go ahead, and then, okay.
So I, I don't feel comfortable supporting this project. I think that the recommendation to permit a relocation of the existing tall wall, the size is not negligible. The tall wall is going from 5,000 feet to over 9,100 square feet, which is an 80% increase. To me, that's, that's not a relocation, it's an extension. And the extension, which wraps around the east side of the building, adds an entirely new face, basically, to the project. And yet there was no community meeting and no review by design review subcommittee. The public benefit may or may not be sufficient, depending on the revenue generated, but without the, the language that we put in other DAs, which is equal to the greater of 20% revenue share or minimum annual guaranteed payment, we are potentially forfeiting revenue. I also think that the 50% threshold for continually occupied for a building this size seems low. And the fact that the new billboard was approved, that obstructs another, and that staff is trying to accommodate the existing one, to me demonstrates how approving too many signs will only serve to cannibalize existing signage. One person who wrote in, public comment, asked why the city is even considering this relocation when views are not protected. This is something we tell residents all the time, that views are not protected. And I thought that was a good question. If we, if we do care about views, then it needs to, it needs to apply to everything. And also, if we do care about views, then I don't understand why we're allowing an expert panel to review billboard designs in a vacuum. Shouldn't they be looking at each proposed project in the context of its surroundings? That's why I'm a little disappointed that the applicant did not go to these other public hearings to state their concerns. And I think that by not participating in the public hearing process that we have in the city, it's, it's like giving special treatment. I also think that this is, is, is a dangerous precedent. I think it's saying your views are protected, and it's only going to lead to more requests and, and probably lawsuits. Again, an 80% increase in size, not a relocation, but in fact, an additional face, no community input, no design review, a low occupy threshold, and a fixed dollar public benefit. I think it's a bad deal for the city, and it's, it's not a good deal for the public. Thank you.
Thank you. I noticed some community engagement comments as part of the staff report. So it seems like in some ways, community has been aware of this and has engaged. So I'm glad to see that there's some comments here with regards to that. So while there may have not been community meetings, engagement is happening, we're hearing from people. We know this program of billboards on Sunset is going to be challenging, and I just appreciate the acknowledgement from staff that there was, you know, maybe something that wasn't seen that we can learn from in this instance. And what I'm really glad, more than anything, in this relocation effort, is that the city is getting something from this. There's real community benefits coming back with this program that haven't existed. And if we were to leave this or deny this request, what we would effectively have is an existing tall wall with no community benefits that is obstructed, that is providing, you know, a less good deal to the developers who have provided tremendous community benefit to West Hollywood for years in other ways. And now we can finally get something from this opportunity. I think that's really what I see here on the table in a big way. And as somebody who lives and walks that area of Sunset, I'm glad that that wall won't be obstructed, but will instead be a continuous sort of visual, you know, enhancement on that building in the long run. I don't think I have any other questions. I had concerns about that 19 feet on the east-facing side, that's going to no longer be anything. The idea that it's just sort of left blank and maybe undimmed, it's hard for me to see that as a, as a good thing in the long run. I don't want to push for expanded square footage on that space, but knowing that it's dead space anyways to the ad, I, I'm just curious, was there any consideration about not leaving those 19 feet on that side blank and just having, you know, a challenging sort of ad placement that we have to deal with instead?
No. We, we were aware of the size, and, and, you know, it would even be bigger then, so...
But it is possible if we wanted to require that be a solid color or something like that, so that way it's not just a blank wall, though we could certainly add a condition.
Yeah, I think that something to that effect would make sense, something that could sort of blend in with the side, you know, in a better visual way. That's my only concern, and it sounds like you're on it. So thank you.
Yes.
Yeah. So my biggest concern was the lighting and the potential impact of the lighting on neighboring properties, but you've addressed that to my satisfaction, and I thank you for doing that. I want to reiterate what Councilmember Byers said. The current sign doesn't produce any public benefit or any revenue for the city. The extension of the existing sign will now produce revenue for the community. I know Councilmember Meister indicated that she didn't think it was a good deal, but we have adopted a policy of using an outside expert so that we have some basis for the financial requests that we make during these negotiations, and that we're treating all property owners in a fair way based on the value of the signage. So I'm comfortable, based on your representation, that this is what that outside entity has indicated, the value of the sign, and that the value the city should be recouping. So I'm supportive of this, and I want to thank you and thank the applicant for bringing it forward.
Any other comments? My comments have already been addressed, so let's go ahead and move forward to a vote.
Mayor Shine?
Yes.
If you wanted to add the condition about the coloring that side of the wall, we should read some language into the record.
Yes.
The blank space.
Yes. Let's please read the language into the record for the blank space.
Is that part of the motion?
Yes, that would be part of my motion to approve it, as well as staff's recommendation. And who's going to read the language?
I think Brian will.
Brian.
Okay, great.
This will be condition 3.16 on the, the conditional use permit. "The portion of the east wall that does not contain the tall wall image shall be painted a solid color distinguishable from the primary colors used on the advertising campaign in the allowed signed area."
The motion passes, noting the no vote of Councilmember Meister.
We will now hear public hearing, item 3I, and ordinance of the city of West Hollywood amending Title 19 of the West Hollywood Municipal Code, enhancing the city's enforcement authority for unlawful vacation, short-term rentals, and finding the action to be exempt from SEQA. The public hearing is now open. Madam City Clerk, how was this hearing noticed?
As required by law, Mayor.
Will the staff representative please introduce yourself and present the staff report?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, and members of the city council. My name is Vito Adamidis. I'm the city's neighborhood and business safety manager. I am joined tonight by Danny Rivas, our director of community safety, and Lauren Langer, our city attorney. There is also staff from our Planning and Development Services Department and Rent Stabilization Division for any questions that the council may have. The item before you tonight is a proposed ordinance amending the city's vacation rental ordinance, which is housed in Title 19 of the West Hollywood Municipal Code, and stems from a city council direction prior this year to explore ways to enhance enforcement efforts related to short-term rentals. The city's planning commission previously heard this item on May 18th and unanimously supported the proposed amendments before you this evening. In addition, on page, page five of your staff report packet, you will see some additional comments provided by the planning commission for council consideration. This included also a review of the city's administrative fee schedule, fine schedule. These amendments before you tonight, the six amendments before you tonight, is consistent with council's prior direction and includes the following. Number one, expanding the definition of prohibitions on advertisements to include individuals who falsely advertise a vacation rental within the city but are actually located... but are actually located outside the city. Number two, imposing liability to hosting platforms that complete booking transactions for vacation rentals within the city. Number three, expanding and clarifying that enforcement options include, but are not limited to, administrative penalties, civil, and criminal prosecution. Number four, establishing that persons who violate the West Hollywood Municipal Code sections are responsible for reimbursing the city and any law enforcement agencies for investigative costs and requiring retroactive payment on all transit occupancy taxes known as TOT to the city. Number five, creating a private right of action for individuals to bring suit against hosts in violation of the city's ordinance. And finally, number six, authorize administrative subpoenas in order to ensure compliance. Of the six proposed ordinance amendments before you, I would like to highlight number two, which imposes liability to hosting platforms that complete booking transactions for vacation rentals within the city. Staff and the city attorney's office have worked closely to impose liability to the extent they believe the law permits. That is, staff does not believe that the city can impose liability against the hosting platforms for the actual posting and advertising of an unlawful rental, nor does staff believe that the city can impose liability for a hosting platform's failure to monitor or edit such unlawful postings on their websites due to certain protections afforded to them under the Federal Communications Decency Act passed in 1996. However, staff with the city attorney's office is confident to be able to hold accountable hosting platforms for processing what is known as quote-unquote "booking transactions" and accepting the quote-unquote "booking fees" associated with unlawful vacation rentals. I'd like to just share quickly, for the City Council, what the fines would look like for an advertisement with a listed rental price. Let's say we find a short-term rental that's rented, that's listed for $300 a night for a minimum of three nights. Under the city's existing fine schedule, there's a $75 administrative fee. The first offense for such a short-term rental would be 400% of the advertised rate. That is, the total number of nights multiplied by the actual daily night. So in that $300 example, it would be $900. $300 a night times the three, which is the minimum rental period that they ask for. That first offense would be 400% of that, or $3,675. It increases, on the second offense, to 600% of the advertised rate, which would bring it to $5,475. And the third offense would go to 800% of that advertised rate, which would be $7,275. The sum total of those fines after the third offense is $16,425. We believe that that sends an important message as far as what these short-term rentals are causing in our community and what we're trying to accomplish in the way of compliance. This concludes staff's presentation, and we're available to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Do my colleagues have any questions? Mayor Portem?
Thank you so much. How long does it take to collect on these fines? Like, what's the process? So let's say you fined Joe, you fine him 400%, it's however much that was on Monday. When are we looking at actually getting that money back? Because I think that's always the collective fine issue.
I'll hop right in, Mayor Portem Erickson. So, yeah, so once a citation is issued, there will be a notice that goes out to the responsible party, and it reiterates, right, the fact that they were just issued a citation. Then they're given about 22 days to make payment or to contest the citation. If they haven't contested the citation, then at that point, if they haven't paid, you have a 50% penalty fee of the balance of the citation that's then applied at that point. In addition to that, you'll have a secondary notice that goes out after 55 days from the date that the citation was issued. Same process, however, that 50% penalty now just doubled to 100%. And so you essentially will have, at that point, 150% more than what the total balance is owed on a citation. And then at that point, that is when we send it off to our debt collection agency, and then we look at other potential legal remedies in terms of recovering that process. So it does kind of vary. But technically, you know, during that process, right, I'd say after about 60 days, we'll start that recovery process.
And are you fine, you're fining the individual, not the landlord?
No, we actually will address the landlord first, typically through a notice of violation before we issue a fine. And then that triggers communication from the property owner, right? The property owner, typically, they will contact the code enforcement officer, and then they will share maybe the tenant's information if they do in fact know the unit specifically, right, that's being advertised. But in some cases, we don't know what unit, and you have several units. And so we address it to the landlord. The landlord will always be kept in that communication. But if they do supply voluntarily the tenant's information, then we will also hold the tenant responsible.
What happens if it's the landlord doing it?
If it's the landlord, then that.
The fines increase if it's a landlord because they're clearly not renting out their units and they're just rather Airbnb-ing them or whatever it is? Is there a different schedule for the landlord versus the tenant? I mean, I've heard, I know during the pandemic, you know, I heard from one individual in the community who, and we've talked about this individual, rented out her apartment and, you know, got caught, stopped, and, you know, there was that, right? And she was trying to, she was trying to survive, right? I understand that. And then we also know of cases, some of which I'm sure we'll hear in public comment tonight, of landlords actively, willfully doing it. I mean, I don't know if you've thought about this, but a delineation of fines for a renter versus a landlord is something I'm interested in. I don't know the will of my colleagues there, but I don't know how you would even enforce something like that, or if it's even enforceable. But that's just my general questions for you. I didn't know if there was a difference, but it sounds like no, and that's fine as well.
All right, any other questions from my colleagues at all?
I just have one. It's noted that this is an aggressive fee schedule. I think it's appropriate, but aggressive was a used word and the word used in the staff report. We're not just coming up with this out of thin air. Other cities are doing similar fee schedules and maybe even more aggressive than ours. Is that something you're finding?
Actually, the 400, 600, and 800% approach is unique and specific to our city. My understanding is there are not any other cities throughout the state of California that apply that. We've actually had an opportunity to present that through the California Association of Code Enforcement Officers, and we've been approached by different cities. But because of the significant increase that can be applied, a lot of cities end up choosing not to adopt that type of fine schedule. And instead, we do have a separate fine schedule for those short-term rental cases that we're unable to acquire the evidence that we need to prove that there's a rental, an advertised rental rate in the formula that Vito had just described. So in that case, we would apply the $1,000, right, for first offense, 2,500 for the second, and then 5,000 for the third. That's more in line with what you're seeing in other cities, but the 400, 600, and 8% is unique to West Hollywood.
So we're taking this as very seriously here. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have public commenters on this? Well, we're going to receive comment from any persons in the audience who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the City Council for a maximum of two minutes. And if you haven't already, please submit your speaker slip to the clerk.
Thank you, Mary. Yes, we have four individuals in chambers. Our first one is Tori Funk, to be followed by Raphael Gamon. If I mispronounced that, I apologize.
Good evening, Mayor Shine and councilmembers. My name is Tori Funk. I am a researcher and policy analyst at Better Neighbors Los Angeles. As you may already know, Better Neighbors is a coalition of tenants, hotel workers, housing advocates, all with the shared goal of advocating for the passage of and enforcement of short-term rentals regulations in Southern California. Prior to working at Better Neighbors, I actually worked as an eviction defense advocate at a local legal aid organization. During this time, I spoke to countless tenants that were both in West Hollywood and Los Angeles that were facing eviction because their landlord wanted to convert their unit into a short-term rental because they knew they could make more money. In addition to facing eviction threat, these tenants mourned the loss of community caused by the proliferation of short-term rentals. They missed knowing the people that they lived next to. They missed being around people who have equal stake in their community. Once I started working at Better Neighbors, I came to realize that the issues that these tenants were facing stem not only from bad landlords and short-term rental platforms, but also cities' inability to enforce our short-term rental regulations. The proposed amendments will probably allow West Hollywood to better enforce their ordinance by expanding the definition of prohibitions, by providing a private right of action, and by holding platforms accountable. However, these amendments will do nothing if the city does not enforce these amendments. So so it's important for city staff to actually enforce these and listen to impacted residents who are reporting illegal short-term rentals because a lot of people will not have the resources to pursue legal action on their own. So I urge you to pass the amendments, but also hold the city accountable for utilizing them. Thank you.
Thank you, Tori. Our next speaker is Raphael Gamon, to be followed by Mary-Kate Leibman.
Good evening, council. I'm in West Hollywood, more than half of my life, I realized earlier. In January '23, we reached out to code enforcement officers about the illegally established Airbnb units in our RSO-protected dwelling. At first, your code enforcement officers dismissed our concerns as insubstantial. At that time, we provided evidence that Hiller Associates had illegally established rental businesses in West Hollywood, where STRs are forbidden. They bluntly listed on multiple rental platforms. Trying to ticket a billion-dollar platform is silly. You ticket the landlord. Code did open a file on our issue in February, but closed it back, closed it down in '23 and March. Please read it. There is merely a fraction mentioned about the 15 times we called them, provided evidence. They knew that these files were closed in April when Dani Rivas and Vito Adamidis sat in my flat and told us, the tenant association, to our faces, they were on top of it, and they cared. They lied then, and they're still lying about it. In April this year, some of the honorable council members joined us in a Zoom meeting and promised, knowing that the case had been closed, that they would be following up, promised us oversight. It did not happen. The existing laws are sufficient on the books already to close down any illegal business in an RSO apartment building in West Hollywood. They're just not enforcing it. The amendments you are proudly presenting to be adapted today are not seriously effective if the people sworn to protect the citizens are not enforcing the laws on the books already. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Raphael. Mary-Kate Leibman, to be followed by Edith Magon.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Edith, can you lower the mic so it's closer?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. So I also reside in the same building as Mr. Gamon. I have personally reached out to code enforcement no less than 15 times with the listing, with video evidence, and our testimony to what was going on in our building. I have since placed a request for records relating to this case and have yet to hear back from the city with regards to that. That was over two weeks ago, as we had learned that these cases were closed. I appreciate these amendments being made, but if code enforcement is not going to take seriously the reports that already exist, how can we be assured that things are going to be acted upon? In our case, our landlord knowingly engaged in illegal activity and saw the fines as merely a cost of doing business, provided he even was fined. So we urge the City Council to adopt these amendments, and I hope that they also include holding the platform liable in spite of Section 230. If you don't challenge the broad scope of Section 230 with laws like this, then why even bother? Because Santa Monica has shown that it is possible, and it has been upheld on appeal. So I hope that City Council keeps that part of the provision intact. Thank you for your time this evening. Appreciate it.
Our final speaker this evening on this item is Edith Magon. Okay, I don't see Edith coming forward, so we can move forward, Mayor.
I think Edith just spoke. That was Mary-Kate. Oh, okay. Sorry. All right.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question for the city attorney.
Sure.
Thank you. Lauren, the last speaker talked about Santa Monica, the city of Santa Monica, and that they have challenged the platform. Can you speak about that?
Yes, the reason that we chose some of the language in this ordinance is because it's been held, upheld by the courts in cases in Santa Monica and San Francisco. So it seems to be a pretty solid approach, given the restrictions in federal law, that we can't, that we can't treat them as publishers. We want to go after the booking transaction and the collecting money for the illegal activity. That seems to be a defensible approach to enforcing against illegal short-term rentals.
The public testimony is finished?
Yes, we can close the public testimony portion of the public hearing.
Yes, okay, so let's go ahead and move to council deliberations.
Thank you, Mayor. There's one section that I want you to look at, the language of Section 19.36.331. There was just something in that that I made a note. I don't have it right in front of me. I'd have to pull it up on my computer. But it, it said something about charging at that time. Do you have it in front of you, John?
It says, "Hosting platforms shall not complete any booking transaction for any vacation rental in the city at the time the hosting platform receives the fee for the booking transaction."
Yeah.
Is that the language?
It was the "at the time" language that didn't make sense to me. Can't we just say "if" they receive a fee? I was worried that somebody would say, "Well, we didn't charge it at that time, that we charged it at a later date."
I think it's written that way because what constitutes a booking transaction is the reservation. Let's see. It shall mean any reservation or payment service provided between a prospective visitor and host.
Melissa, I mean, Lauren, what page are you on?
So I am on page 2 of 5 of the ordinance.
Got it.
In Section C. I think the concept is the booking transaction and collecting the fee are what is the full transaction that is illegal.
Right, but they don't have to be contemporaneous with one another. So that's why I wanted to change that language to say "and" or "if" or something like that. Yeah, I think "if" would work.
Yeah, I think "if," I'm fine with "if." I think that makes more sense if I read it, it's clearer.
If the hosting platform receives the fee?
Yeah.
If?
If.
Yeah, I think that works. So you.
And then my other comment is, thank you for bringing this forward. I agree with the public sentiment that none of this is really worthwhile unless we're actually committing to enforce. And there's one other thing that I would like you to look at. We can't do it tonight, but there are apartment buildings throughout the city that are, I don't know, overrun with Realtor lock boxes. And those are not things that are being used by apartment dwellers. They're being used to facilitate these kind of. They're being used to facilitate these kind of short-term rentals. So I think we need to either come up with a mechanism to identify those buildings and go after them, or we need to make it illegal to use those on residential apartment buildings. They are used for the sale of real property, but they're not being used for sale when there are 15 of them on an apartment building. So I'd like you to look at that and investigate whether that is something that we could address.
Mayor, actually, Councilmember Meister had her.
Thank you, and I'm really glad that Councilmember Harmon brought that up. I'm good with all of, all of the additions that are being proposed. I just wanted to, I seem to be coming with little things here, but I happened to do a search, and West Hollywood, there's a, there's a website called West Hollywood Vacation Rentals, where you can search West Hollywood vacation homes. And not only are there a number of houses from single-family homes, but there are also a number of units from, for example, 9001 Santa Monica Boulevard. And they give a monthly fee, but it doesn't talk about that there's a year lease, because on the apartments, there's supposed to be a year lease, and there's nothing about that. Plus, they're under vacation rentals, which, you know, makes you think that they're not looking to lease it for a year. So to add on to what Councilmember Harmon said, I think that the, first of all, I think the 30 or 31-day minimum on single-family homes and condos isn't working. We're seeing houses being rented for weekends or just a week, and they end up being, you know, used as vacation rentals or as party houses. So, and our neighborhoods are not neighborhoods anymore. And so I think that we have to look at changing that minimum, extending that minimum lease period for single-family homes and condos as well. And I know that there were objections from the real estate industry, they had concerns, I should say, that, you know, sometimes people sell their house and then they stay in it for a while. I mean, I think that we can carve out exceptions or exemptions for those kinds of situations. I think that's easy enough to do. Then the other issue is luxury apartment buildings coming online and not being clear about the lease requirement. And so there are like a ton of units from 9001 Santa Monica Boulevard, which, or better known as the Palm Project, listed on this vacation rental website. And again, nowhere does it say that there's a minimum one-year lease, it just gives a monthly rental. And that project and other mixed-use projects were given double bonuses to provide housing. They were given state bonuses, they were given city bonuses, mixed-use bonuses, and yet these units are being marketed as vacation rentals. And I think that's, it's just a slap in our face, and I think that we need to somehow find a way to address that as well. Thank you.
May I, Mayor?
Yes, you may.
Okay, thank you. I, I agree with all that's been said, and the one thing that I was thinking about and how we could think about enforcement, because I've been trying to think in, in the research, you know, it was like 600 units on Airbnb if you go online and do it. I actually would like a report back from code compliance, it can be quarterly, on the enforcement mechanisms and how you are actually doing on this item, because I think we need to evaluate what tools that we have as a council. I know that there's stuff in the budget that we're talking about with proactive code enforcement. However, this is a very specific issue, is it takes a lot of time out of, out of code's time when they're doing everything else. And I know I say that with a grain of salt, because you get asked to do everything, as Danny and Vito know all too well. However, I would like to have a report back, so that way we can see, the public can see, and that way we can have some accountability as the leaders, as well as the people that need to sit there and say, "If more money is needed for this, if a new division of the city is needed for Airbnb enforcement, if something needs to happen in code that requires a mid-year budget next time, after this budget conversation." I think this is something that we really do need to tackle. I know myself, I know the mayor, and I think all of my colleagues have been saying, there needs to just be prioritized, people in code that do this a majority of their time, because clearly there's, there's money to be made on the other side, and with this aggressive fines structure, there's money to be fined on these people, and sadly, people are abusing it. And I think the lack of enforcement, whatever, and however you want to define that, is being overrun by the landlords in that way, or whoever is doing it. So if my colleagues are amenable to it, I would love to see every four months, a quarterly, however you want to do it, because I don't want that to be a burden on you to then not be doing this, right? But I would like to see the numbers of the timing of when things happen, especially like in the summer. We all know, as the Councilmember Meister was saying, people might rent something for pride and come out, or do something like that. And then Danny, I had a question, but does Los Angeles do or have any accountability here? Because it seems like they are a player, well, the city of Los Angeles, but we're the victim, because there are people that are coming and renting out so-and-so's house, right? And then saying, "Oh, don't go there, come up the street across Fountain," or wherever they are, and that's in LA. Have we been able to communicate with them? What are they saying to us? They don't have much on the books regardless, but what are our options there?
Yeah, so we, we did meet with the city of Los Angeles and their planning department, actually is, is where their short-term rental kind of licensing program and compliance program is housed under. And so because they do have an agreement, they're a lot different from our perspective because they allow short-term rentals, and so they have a pretty robust licensing program when it comes to that. So aside from us establishing, like we did, a point of contact, so when we learn of issues such as these that are being reported by tenants, now we are forwarding that information on, over to them, in terms of providing that listing. And then my understanding from what they've shared is then they communicate with Airbnb or another platform, hosting platform, and then those advertisements are supposed to be removed and taken down. Aside from that, from what they've shared, my understanding is they're not levying any sort of fines or anything towards property owners or tenants, aside from maybe sending like a notice of violation. But then again, they really rely wholeheartedly on communicating to the platforms and then having the listings removed. And according to them, based off of our meeting, that's been effective for them.
Sure. That's all my comments. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Byers?
I just wanted to say, sort of more for the public, I know I've been getting DMs of people sharing, you know, "If you see something, say something," sort of thing happening in a big way around this, people in their buildings, and just want to say for the folks who feel like there's nothing happening, certainly continue to share what you're seeing. We're relaying it onto code enforcement, we're going to continue to be that pipeline. I hope, if anything, this conversation's proving that we're getting more tools in our toolbox to deal with this in a big way. But just for those folks who have been sending the DMs and the emails and tracking the listing and being the detectives in our community on this case for a long time, I want to just appreciate you in a big way and say, stick with this. Now that we have more tools, this will be really exciting. So for the public, not for you all, but thank you staff, too.
Thank you. And I, I also want to say that I'm, this item and does give us a lot more tools to be able to hold these, these platforms more accountable, and that's really, really important. So I'm really proud that we have this before us. As far as, I agree with Councilmember Byers, really definitely, well, I agree with everything everybody's said, but keep, keep letting us know, because you are the eyes in your buildings, and we will continue to now, should this pass tonight, have greater power, and we'll continue to do everything we can to make sure that these platforms are held accountable. And as far as a report back, I just want to clarify, report back plus what you will need from us to, to make enforcement easier as this goes on, and I agree with the report back, I think it's really good for the public and good for us to see the progress.
And if I could just comment just real briefly on the reports, and so as part of the, the budget that will be before you all this evening, there are additional resources that are being applied to actually fulfill a city council directive that was pre-pandemic in terms of implementing a proactive code compliance program. And so the idea is to bring on some contracted code enforcement staff to be able to help with that effort. And in doing so, you know, there will be an outreach campaign that Neighborhood and Business Safety is going to engage with, their communications team on as well, as a part of the rollout of that. And so the idea is, as we're visiting and doing inspections in common areas to fulfill that council directive in our rent-stabilized buildings, the hope is that you will have some tenants as well that will be informing staff while they're there on site about short-term rental activity or even other activity. We are not being proactive in terms of our code enforcement efforts as it relates to short-term rentals, and so that's something that I did want to stress as well, but adding these additional resources, and it is going to take a little time kind of gearing up for that, hiring folks, right, getting the program in place. And so definitely we'll work on reporting back on a quarterly basis, but just know that first quarter is going to be actually the transition period of us getting up and running. And so we probably won't have things in place probably until about six months, would be my guess. So I just want to let council know that.
Thank you. We have a motion to adopt by Mayor Protem Erickson and seconded by Councilmember Hyland.
And to clarify, does the motion include the changes to the ordinance that we made?
Yes, as well as the report back feature.
Thank you.
All right, the motion has been adopted. Okay, before we move on, let's take a eight-minute break. Oh yeah, 10, come back at 8:30. Well, I had, this, this clock is wrong in front of me, this throws me off. Come back at 8:30.
Please return this.
Test, test, test.
This, I got a hot mic. Hot mic. Testing, test, yeah. Are you introducing us as the Human Services Division? That's what's on the PowerPoint, but also Strategic Initiatives. Nice. Okay, well, the PowerPoint says Human Services Division. Okay. How about, yeah. Program administrator working on strategic initiatives for the division.
Please return to your seats. We're going to resume our meeting. Moving on to item 5A, update on the development of the West Hollywood Care Team Behavioral Health Crisis Response Program, approval of an agreement for services with Hathaway Sycamores and authorization of a forthcoming MOU with Los Angeles County Department of Mental Health. We do not need a lengthy staff report because I think we were, we just had some questions. Actually, I'm wondering if do we even need a staff report, Councilmember Heilman? So maybe we'll get straight to the questions.
Actually, it's not a question. I have two comments. One, I really think it's important to have our evaluation standards in place before we begin this program. First, I want to thank you for all of the work and all of the time you put into this. But before we begin any kind of implementation, I think it's important to understand what we're trying to accomplish and how we're going to measure it. This is a substantial amount of money over a couple of years. And we want to make sure that we, we know what we're trying to accomplish. So that's one of the things that I would ask you to do. I know that that's part of what you're recommending, but I don't want us to really move forward with any implementation without knowing in advance what our goals are. The, the second thing I, I just want to say for the record, I know we're entering into this agreement with the organization, and this is an MOU as well with the County Department of Mental Health. And I think you know my views. We have not been well-served by the department for many years. Since we became a city, it was their legal obligation to provide mental health services to residents, both homeless residents and those who are living in sheltered environments, and they haven't done a good job. That's why we've actually had to fund our own mental health workers. And so I know that they're really the only game in town, but I, I hope that we will continue to monitor this because if they're not living up to their obligations under this agreement, we need to be prepared to cancel it and move forward. We also need to hold them accountable as a city because they're supposed to be providing mental health services to every city in the county. And they, their response to us has been not good. And so I hope that, and I, I've said this to you before, I hope though that you will, as the staff implementing this program, bring to our attention any times when they're not living up to their agreement. Those were my only comments. And with that, I'm prepared to support the, the recommendations.
All right. Yeah, no, I just wanted to say that I agree with Councilmember Heilman, and I raised the same concerns earlier today with Cory. And the other thing that maybe, you know, I'm just throwing it out there. Maybe we can ask for some funds from the county, from our homeless, you know, from the, from Measure H funds to, since we are working with them on this. And, you know, we're probably one of the only cities that is, that, you know, is actually doing something on our own.
I, um, thank you. I also want to say I'm actually very excited about where we are. We've been working on this for a long time, and I'm really proud of all of you for getting this up and going. I know it's been a lot. And this is going to be a remarkable program. And I know we've really worked with BeWell as well to make sure that we're doing this in a way that can be as successful, if not more successful, than their program that's proven to be working really well. I, I want us to just say that let's continue working with our county supervisor as well to see about, perhaps working with Supervisor Horvath to see if we can find a space in her office so that we have some kind of campus of sorts. If that is a possibility, I think that would really make this very successful. Just like BeWell has a campus, maybe we don't need something as large as that because our city isn't that large. But that would be a natural follow-through for making this even more successful than what we're doing. I'm prepared, I second the motion, so I think we have a, yes.
I just wanted, because I know this was Mayor Pro, Mayor, my item, Mayor Pro Tim, Mayor Shine's item when we did it a couple of years ago. And I will say that other cities in the, in our little West Side cog are still struggling to even get to 25% of where you're already at. So thank you, Cory. Thank you, Kristoff. Thank you so much, everything that you've been doing. This is another tool in our tool belt, to quote Councilmember Meister, to add to all that we can do to help make sure those people on the streets and those experiencing any type of crisis can get the care that they need in, in West Hollywood. Thank you, Mayor, for being that original co-author with me.
I also just want to jump in. Sorry, put my name on the speaker list. I just wanted to quickly also shout out the whole Strategic Initiatives team and especially Elizabeth Anderson. I know this is 15 years of work in the making. And like, I mean, your leadership, but this program itself, being the project lead and everything you've done, it's just, it's tremendous. So really, thank you for your work on this. And for the community who didn't get to hear the 14-page, or maybe didn't read the 14-page staff report and didn't get to hear, I hope you get to take time to dive in, to read more about what this is all about. 988 is a lifeline that's going to be available for the whole community when this program's online. And this is just really tremendous. So thank you all so much for what you did to bring this. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Council. I would just also add, just for the public's information, is that this team will serve both those folks in the community who are unhoused, but also are housed community members. So this is not a strictly homeless services program. This will serve our community members who are housed as well.
I just had a quick question for Cory. So did I read it right that we need to try to find a space for sycamores here in the city so that they don't have to be outside the city and trying to get here?
Yes. I don't know, City Manager, if you want to address that or if you want us to take that?
Yeah, so we are currently looking at the space across the street from City Hall, the dry cleaner space. It's going to look a lot nicer than a dry cleaner in a couple of months, but we're looking at that as a potential space for that. And we are using some of the funding that we received last year from Councilmember, or sorry, Congressman Schiff's office to help build that space out for them.
That's great. And just one more comment. Today, I just was reading, I get a newsletter from, from Public Administrators, whatever, association. And they had a link to the Conference of Mayors earlier this month. Had a new survey. 113 out of 117 mayors in 36 states said the number of people seeking help for issues ranging from substance abuse to depression to loneliness has increased in the last couple of years. And a majority of the mayors, 88%, also said their cities do not have enough services to meet the growing need. And, and their biggest concern is they were hoping to get funds from the federal government that were promised, but now they may not because of the, of the, of the debt ceiling deal. So anyway, kudos to you for getting this going.
All right. Do we have public speakers on this? Okay, we should have.
No, we do not. I would have jumped in.
Okay, great. Wonderful. So we have a motion and a second. We will now move to item 5B, Dockless Micro Mobility E-Bikes and E-Scooters Pilot Program Update. Let's go ahead and get a brief update on this item, please.
Mayor, if we could just give staff a second to get set up. We are going to have to do this one via Zoom as well.
I see.
One of our consultants is participating via Zoom.
Good evening, Mayor Shine, Mayor Pro Tim Erickson, members of the City Council and members of the public. My name is Paige Portwood. I am Associate Planner for the Long Range Planning Division. Joining me this evening is Francisco J. Contreras, Long Range Planning Manager, and John Kehoe, Planning and Development Services Director. To assist us with any questions you may have, we are also joined by staff from Parking Services, Neighborhood and Business Safety, as well as representatives from the city's authorized operators, Lime and Bird, and our consultant Tool Design Group. The item before you this evening is a Dockless Micro Mobility Pilot Program Update. Staff's recommendation for this item is to receive the update on the pilot program and provide staff with further direction. The pilot program launched in July 2021 and has been ongoing for two years. To provide brief background, the pilot program has generated almost 450,000 trips, with the peak number of trips occurring during the summer months and decreased ridership during the winter months. As of lately, in some months, Lime has shown to generate almost twice as many trips as Bird. The city no longer has a contract with Wheels, also known as Hellbiz, since October 2022. However, Populous has still been able to track a few rogue devices that have entered the city since last fall. This graph shows the percentage breakdown of travel patterns for users, where approximately 1/3 of trips begin and end within West Hollywood. 28% of trips are inbound and are also highlighted because this indicates that while riders may start their trips outside of the city, their destination is within West Hollywood. This heat map displays the volume of trip origins in West Hollywood by corridor. And this map shows the most popular trip origin and destination locations by city block group in West Hollywood. The darker blues indicate the more popular areas for users. The Los Angeles Sheriff Department provided staff with data on the number of accidents with injury that have occurred since July 2021 through May 2023 for different transportation modes. The data showcases the reported accident with injury ratio is significantly higher for scooters versus vehicles compared to scooters versus pedestrians. The program has received over 1,400 complaints since July 2021. 66% of the complaints are regarding devices blocking the sidewalk. ABM, the city's dockless fleet management company, has reported having to relocate over 6,500 devices since their contracts start in August 2021. This equates to roughly relocating 10 devices per day. At the March 6, 2023 City Council meeting, the City Council directed staff to return with updates on the implementation of slowdown speed throttling technology, insurance requirements, and potential revenue sources to recover operating costs of the program. Staff was directed to return June 2023. Since March, both authorized operators have proposed two different options in response to the city's requirement to implement, implement sidewalk speed throttling technology. Bird has implemented sidewalk speed throttling technology along only three corridors of the city, which are segments of San Vicente Boulevard, Santa Monica Boulevard, and Fairfax Avenue. Lime has formally announced they are not integrating speed throttling technology in any markets that they operate. They have cited safety concerns with interfering with riders' trips and the inconsistency of GPS. More information on this can be found in the staff report packet. Instead of implementing throttling technology, Lime has placed a citywide speed cap for all devices at 12 miles per hour, which was previously 15 miles per hour. Staff has received feedback that the 3 miles per hour reduction in speed seems to be noticeably slower. The City Council has also requested more information on liability requirements for pedestrian injuries where a dockless user is at fault. On July 1 of this year, AB 371 goes into effect in which shared mobility service providers or operators must offer or maintain $10,000 of coverage for injury or death suffered by pedestrians and $1,000 to property damage to an assistive technology device. This policy excludes all bikes. In regards to potential program revenues, staff found that the most common fee, in addition to the annual permit fee and per-device fee, is a per-trip fee. Case study research of nearby dockless programs indicate the standard rate of a per-trip fee is 20 cents per trip. In conclusion, staff has drafted a few alternatives for the City Council to consider, which is detailed in the report. In summary, the City Council was adamant about sidewalk slowdown throttling technology in all devices citywide. Neither operator is able to meet these expectations for the program. Thus, alternative one is to end the pilot program and ban dockless mobility devices from West Hollywood. The second alternative is to continue the pilot through October 31, 2023, as was approved at the March City Council meeting. Staff will need specific direction on how to proceed for the duration of the pilot, such as which operator or operators' proposal on sidewalk technology will suffice. To present all the viable alternatives, the third is to proceed with initiating a scope of work for a permanent program, which was the City Council's decision in September 2022. This alternative would still require councils input on requirements for speed throttling of devices for the duration of the pilot program. That concludes our presentation. We are now available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Are there questions from my colleagues? Councilmember Byers?
Yeah, quickly, you flashed some slides. Which of the attachments would those slides be in? Or is it just reflected in the staff report? There was a specific data point I wanted to see again. There was a specific data point I wanted to see again.
It's within the staff report, all of the images that we showed tonight.
Okay, great, thank you.
Which slide did you want to see? Okay, Mayor Pro Tim?
How do our statistics compare to other West Side cities? Let's take Santa Monica, for example, Culver City. Are we consistent? Or are we seeing more trips, less trips? If you don't have this information, I totally understand. But any generalities out there? Because I know you've been diving into this issue for quite some time.
So we don't actually have the specific comparisons of West Side cities. I do know that there is interest among several operators that operate in Los Angeles, Santa Monica. So West Hollywood is competitive within the region.
And how many pounds of carbon or whatever it is that was taken off the streets? I couldn't, do you have it off the top of your head, the environmental impact?
Yes. We estimate around 253 metric tons.
And that's how many cars?
55 passenger cars, based on EPA data.
Thanks. So the throttling speed, so Lime isn't throttling anymore. They're slowing their speeds down by 3 miles per hour. However, the GPS is unreliable. So for example, if I'm riding on the street, which I always do because I fear I'm going to get a video taken of me, which is fine. But if I'm riding on the street, the sidewalk, it actually thinks I'm on the sidewalk and it slows me down even further. Is that the unreliability of kind of what you're talking about?
Yes, the margin of error.
And is it possible to geo-grid the city's sidewalks in any type of perfect way? That in a perfect world, let's say you gave it to Lime and they wouldn't be on the sidewalk? Or is there a room for, it seems like the room for error is quite high, regardless of what we do?
Yes, that's correct.
Great. And then the insurance requirements are through the state, right? So the state requires Bird, Lime, Hellbells, or whatever it's called now, Wheels, I'm just going to call it Wheels, to have these types of insurances. So the local cities, it's redundant for us to then create another insurance program, correct?
Correct, it is a state bill.
Yeah, and so, but the state requires the companies, as a statewide operator, to have it. So us, as a local entity, would be redundant because they would have two types of policies. That wouldn't make sense, correct?
Correct.
Because I believe all the scooter companies went neutral on the bill than being opposed to it. And I think that was amended language, if I'm not mistaken, right?
I believe so.
Great, those are all my questions right now. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Councilmember Meister?
I just had one question. When you're considering the GHG's emitted, or being saved, are you counting ABM's pickup to relocate these devices? No, we are not. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Heilman, questions?
I have questions. My first question is, what is the status of the survey or the statistical, the accurate statistical survey we were, we requested at the last meeting? It was Councilmember Meister and I.
Sure, Mayor. So we have one online survey, which is happening now. That's available till the middle of July.
Yes.
So we expect that to be a statistically valid survey as well. We are also pending the direction from Council tonight to launch the randomized phone survey, which is, I think, the survey which you're referring to. So depending on whether or not you'd want it to continue the program based on the recommendations tonight, we are ready to launch that starting tomorrow. If the recommendation or direction is not to move forward, we wanted to not follow through with that survey just because of the expense and the cost. If we weren't going to move with additional pilot.
Thank you. My next question is, I see the attachment D, which is the chart for the Regional Dockless Micro Mobility Network and regional shared on-demand mobility operators with the different fees that we have and all the other cities. Can you explain to me the policy compliance? And for the public, the policy compliance column?
Yes, so basically, there are regulations that the city puts in place, such as no-ride zones, no-park zones. Through our contract with Populace, they can track that when a device rides through a no-ride zone or parks in a no-parking zone. And some cities have financial repercussions if a device goes into one of those areas. Currently, West Hollywood, we don't implement any financial repercussions. So that is an option if the City Council is interested in exploring that.
Okay. I want to ask some questions about ABM. Currently, ABM is who we contract for, and they go out and pick up the scooters when it's reported, and they go around and...
Correct, yes.
Go around, they go around on their own and kind of check too?
Yes.
And block by block also calls scooters in?
Yes, or while they're out in the field, they will pick up scooters and put them in the correct place if they're blocking the sidewalk.
And I read that we pay for that service.
That's correct.
In the staff report, it said that there's, other cities do something different so that the providers or the scooter companies are paying for?
Yes, the service, the service is unique to the city of West Hollywood. And all of the research we've done, the, our neighboring cities who have dockless programs have the operators handle all of this within their own company. They don't hire a third-party fleet management service.
Do we know how successful that has been in other cities where the operators handle it?
I didn't hear of any complaints. I don't think that it's as, I guess, efficient as ABM's service is since they're partners with the city directly.
Have there been discussions with the operators for them to contract with ABM?
No, not to contract with ABM, but they do have, a lot of them do have their own fleet services, fleet staff to do the work for them.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim Erickson has a couple of questions.
Thank you. A couple more things that rang in my head. What's the average time for a phone call to go out again and pick up a scooter?
I'm actually going to defer that to my colleague Kobe Wagman, who's here with Parking Services.
Thought you were safe for the night, Kobe.
It's just under 20 minutes.
Just under 20 minutes. And city of LA, all these other cities, this is a private thing that we offer our residents because of the increased use. So it's a luxury that we offer versus not, right?
Yes.
Great. And then, my last question is, is if we banned them all tonight and said, nope, goodbye, that doesn't mean that tomorrow there won't be just scooters everywhere and then we're dealing with the same issue because we have LA and all these other cities doing things in our city and then we have no repercussions, correct? You'll see scooters, stuff, even maybe stuff we've never even seen before in the city, correct?
We may see scooters, but definitely at a reduced number.
So at a reduced number, based on the amount that ABM is picking up every day? You said 10 per day? Or is it a reduced number of like the amount of scooters? Like Bird's at 100, Lime's at 100. Are we seeing less than that? Or like, do you have a number, any type of?
I don't have an exact number, but we did talk to our neighbors in Beverly Hills, and they, they still see scooters riding through their city. They still pick up and impound scooters. It's definitely not at the rate that ABM handles and relocates scooters now, 10 a day. I think that they said something like 20 in a month.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Do we have public comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor, we have 12 individuals in chambers, and we have roughly six individuals in Zoom. Did you want to keep it to two minutes? Or did we want to reduce the time?
Let's read this to 90 seconds, since we have a lot to go for the, it's a heavy schedule.
Okay.
Agenda, so 90 seconds per speaker, please.
Okay, so I will call our first speaker, Kevin Burton, to be followed by Mikey Friedman.
Good evening, Council. I'm Kevin Burton, I'm with the West Hollywood Bicycle Coalition. We want to thank staff for all these many months and beyond their work in doing this analysis and in supporting the program. We support staff's recommended option 3, continuing preparation for a permanent program, which includes, of course, measures to improve the safe and legal operation of electric devices on the streets and during parking on sidewalks. Support for this program is evidenced by the very large use, about 600 per day, 19,000 per month within West Hollywood. There's a lot of enthusiasm for these devices. And you have to consider what will happen if they're removed. What, Atlanta did the same thing in their urban core, similar to West Hollywood. Immediately, traffic congestion increased because the users went right back to their cars. The trips are too long to walk, they didn't want to take public transit. We also support Council choosing those vendors that will implement speed throttling to improve safety. And finally, the most important thing you can do is to improve safety on the streets via increased infrastructure for bicyclists and scooter riders.
Thank you, Kevin. Our next speaker is Mikey Friedman, to be followed by Jesse Harris.
Hi. After reading the staff report on 5B, I strongly urge you to approve the alternative 1 to end the program. Bird only has three streets with safety precautions. Lime refuses to continue working on the speed throttling measures. Both companies are contemptuous of AB 371. You're spending a lot of money that other cities that still have scooters don't spend, and you're getting bubkas in return. You need these companies and their mess in our sweet little city like you need a hole in the head. Tell them to take a hike. Also, only a few people complained about scooters, piffle. My own little petition had 545 residents who wanted them banned, and I believe an honest survey will show a lot more. The staff only mentioned the cost of alternative 1. The other two will cost you a heck of a lot more. I hope that you will say alternative 1 is the best option, that tripping over a scooter or that getting hit by one won't be a problem anymore, and that older adults and people with disabilities will have equal access again. Today, WeHo is a dangerous junkyard overrun by scooters, and it isn't safe for anyone. But you can end that. You can do the right and unselfish thing. To voters, it'll be a sign of strength and caring. Look, if somebody really wants a scooter, they can buy it, get insurance, and obey the laws or pay a hefty fine. Scooter owners seem to be more responsible anyway about where they ride, and they sure don't abandon scooters they paid good money for in the middle of the sidewalk.
Thank you, Mikey.
So please, end the program now. Because we don't want to live like this anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Mikey. I believe Jesse Harris has left, but just want to confirm. Okay, our next speaker would be Michael Covato, on behalf of Bird.
Good evening, members of Council, city staff. Appreciate you having me here today. I'm Michael Covato, I'm Director of Government Partnerships here at Bird. With me tonight is our Regional General Manager, Kate Jeremiah, and our Account Manager, Julianne Ruler. West Hollywood has historically proven itself to be an excellent partner as we look to encourage alternative transportation across the region. Shared mobility reduces traffic congestion, improves air quality, roughly about 500 air balloons worth, if you're calculating 55 cars. Significantly reduces the cost of road repairs, enables equitable transportation for those who might be disadvantaged, and stimulates local businesses. Independent research from member universities shows that every single individual e-scooter contributes roughly $2,200 in additional spending at local businesses that otherwise would not have occurred. We've worked very hard over the last six years to improve safety and technology. This is still a nascent business. In January, we implemented our sidewalk riding technology and special additional measures on the three corridors that we've mentioned thus far. Certainly happy to continue to work with staff in creating an environment that is safe for all riders, pedestrians, and residents of West Hollywood. The residents of West Hollywood have shown, as was indicated by the first speaker here this evening, perhaps not in the outreach to your offices, but in their behavior for their desire for alternative transportation. Staff has relayed to you roughly 4,500 miles, or 4,500 trips. That's around 627,000 miles, or 35 trips around the circumference of the earth. 29% of those were done as regular commuting trips with individuals who have taken six or more trips.
Thank you, Mike, I apologize. Speaker time didn't go off.
Thank you. We would encourage you to continue the pilot program.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Julianne Ruler, on behalf of Bird, to be followed by Kate Jimenez.
Thank you, councilmembers. I'd like to cede my time in the interest of time, but make myself available to answer questions to you all later. Thank you.
We don't actually do that, I don't think, cede time here. So it's 90 seconds each of you.
Yeah, there's no ceding of time.
Yeah, there's no ceding of time. So go ahead and use your 90 seconds if you want. Yeah, okay.
Thank you. Kate, did you want to speak?
I was going to cede my time as well.
Okay. Our next speaker this evening, then, would be Brad Kusler.
Thank you, everybody. I'm an avid bicyclist. I have an e-bike, I love it. I certainly sympathize with the lady who's afraid of getting hit on the sidewalk and stuff. I saw on page 14 the statistics, oh, watch out, statistic, that 99% of the scooters were unoccupied. No one was on them. So their main complaint is them being in the way. I know, I've seen them on the sidewalk before, like in my way. You know, three piled it somewhere. So I think these things can be worked out, all of these problems. But I just love my e-bike, and I've got 2,000 miles on it. I'm 80 years old. It's the way to get around. I feel really sad for people who don't know the joy and the efficiency of the bicycle. Thank you. Number three, number three is the, continue, but work out the problem with the scooters on the sidewalk.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Manny Rodriguez, to be followed by Murray Aronson.
Hello, Council. Manny Rodriguez, West Hollywood. After over two years, the pilot program has accomplished its goal. It has, it has taken the Council's directive, implemented a framework, and thoroughly evaluated the scooter company's compliance and user behavior. The outcome is clear. Nothing has changed how this business model operates. Scooters are still aggressively riding on the sidewalks and being dumped on sidewalks. At this, as all this continues to happen because the on-demand scooter companies have no interest in any accountability either by them or their users. This is not to say that the city staff has not made every possible effort to mitigate these negative impacts of these vending machines on public property. The recklessness, aggressiveness, and junkification of West Hollywood has proven to be impossible to avoid. As long as dockless scooter companies continue to operate with a license to disturb the public right of way and nickel and dime many people that can least afford it, this will continue. At your last update, you were very frustrated, and you gave clear direction on your expectations. But you were ignored again. It's time to stop business with these companies and reinstate the prohibition of on-demand scooters. There should be no more compromises, no more empty promises, no more do-overs. There should be no more compromises, no more empty promises, no more do-overs, no more experimentation. We have a unique walkable city, I hope you'll want to protect that. Pedestrians need to get back their confidence in the walkable environment, it's all we have left.
Thank you, Manny. Our next speaker is Murray Aronson, to be followed by Rick Watts.
Hello, members of the city council. I've almost been hit by a speeding scooter on the street, on Santa Monica Boulevard. I have friends who are much mobily challenged and if any of them got hit by one, there could be curtains for them. And I've actually tripped over a parked scooter, not in West Hollywood, but I almost, it's happened to me in West Hollywood too, that almost, but I actually tripped over a scooter and fortunately, I wasn't hurt or anything. All I want to see is more safety. Scooters go too fast and they're left willy-nilly on the street and they're going to cause a lot of danger to a lot of people. So do something about public safety. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Rick Watts.
Rick Watts, City of West Hollywood. Even 12 miles an hour is about the top speed of a marathon runner. That's not slow. The city of West Hollywood and the citizens here were given a big middle finger by both Bird and Lime when they first came into this city, two, three years ago, and just dumped all their products on the city streets without going through the licensing process, without talking to anybody, without talking to any of the city officials, without getting the business licensing that any other business in this city, if they had just opened up a storefront and started selling products, you would have shut them down. And now you're getting a big metal finger again from Lime and to a lesser degree from Bird. These things are still a hazard, we know they are. All of you and everyone in here continues to see scooters being ridden on the sidewalks despite the law and both of those companies aren't taking any responsibility to make sure that their products are not continuing to be used in a hazardous manner. And as recently as my walk back down after taking a relatively blind person back to his home earlier this evening, another scooter, I forget which, it was Bird or Lime, comes zooming down the sidewalk, right here on San Vicente, right past us. Thank you. Close it.
Thank you, Rick.
Option one, close it down.
Thank you, Rick. I'm going to read citizen position slips into the record and then we will go to the speakers in Zoom. Jesse Harris is in support of keeping the scooter program. Michael Carter supports the recommended item and Patrick Blood opposes continuing the scooter program. Now we'll move to Zoom.
Our first speaker on Zoom for this item is Catherine Dodson, on behalf of Wheels. Catherine, you'll have two minutes, please press star six.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Go ahead.
Thank you guys so much, I'm the partnership and policy associate here at Help Does Wheels. I just wanted to come on and speak real quick. We, Help Does recently acquired Wheels and they have been operating in Milan, Italy for the last three years. Obviously, we are very committed to, you know, keeping the community safe and we want to introduce our e-bikes and our sidewalk detection stand-up scooters, which is two of our latest models. We do have operators that would be more than happy, obviously, to be in the city and help keep the sidewalks safe, keep the community safe. You know, the scooter itself hosts all the zone maps, you know, kind of removing the clutter and carelessness. And the app itself does teach riders how to properly and safely use the vehicles. We also have a low-income program because we believe that equitable service is very important and so access to safe and portable transportation should be available to everyone. And obviously, we are here for any questions or concerns and thank you guys so much for your time and allowing me to speak today.
Thank you, Catherine. Our next speaker is Derek Stiehlman from Spin, to be followed by Jacob Mandell from Super Pedestrian. Derek, you'll have two, or a minute and a half, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Good evening, my name is Derek Stiehlman, Government Partnerships for the U.S. West Coast at Spin. We appreciate your time tonight in reviewing the micro-mobility pilot program and we encourage the city of West Hollywood to implement a safe and permanent program with reasonable program policies for the future that also ensures the financial sustainability for this mode of transportation. Please feel free to reach out with any questions about the information that Spin provided to you tonight around our technology and we hope to be able to apply for a permit in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Our next speaker is Jacob Mandell from Super Pedestrian, to be followed by Charlie Mastelloni from Lime. Jacob, you will have a minute and a half, please press star mute two, star six, thank you.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Jacob Mandell and I'm a policy manager at Super Pedestrian, a micro-mobility company that operates a shared e-scooter service in Los Angeles. Thank you for the opportunity to comment in favor of continuing West Hollywood's micro-mobility pilot program with the eventual goal of making the program permanent. Super Pedestrian is very proud of the service we provide the Los Angeles region and we would serve West Hollywood with the same level of community-oriented service that our riders know and love and be a collaborative partner to meet West Hollywood's unique needs. In our proposal, which is located in Attachment H, we propose bringing a mix of both standing and seated scooters to West Hollywood that will monitor for sidewalk riding during every ride and deliver targeted, specific rider education at the end of each trip. We are also committed to working with the city to explore further interventions as appropriate, including fees, fines, suspensions, or permanent bans for the most problematic riders. We hope that you will support continuing the program and allow Super Pedestrian to begin operations in West Hollywood. I am here over Zoom should you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Our next speaker is Charlie from Lime, to be followed by Alec Friedman. Charlie, you will have 90 seconds, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Good evening, city council. Does this work?
Go ahead, yes.
Is this working?
Go ahead.
Okay, cool. Good evening, city council, my name is Charlie Mastelloni, I'm Senior Manager of Government Relations at Lime. Lime has successfully operated the dockless micro-mobility program since July 2021 and our bike share program since July 2022. We've had over 61,000 riders completing over 158,000 trips and saved over 270,000 pounds of CO2 emissions as a result of our deployment. Two of our deployment bans are also fully EV and we're working on transitioning our full fleet to be completely carbon neutral. Safety is also our top priority. Out of eight, over 800,000 trips in West Hollywood last year, no pedestrian injuries were reported. We implemented a citywide speed cap of 12 miles an hour based on feedback from the community and city council and have seen very successful results. Additionally, we have telemetry-based sidewalk technology deployed on all scooters. We're committed to addressing sidewalk riding using proven technologies and educational measures used successfully in cities such as San Francisco, which is outlined in Attachment F, page 19. And we will continue to deploy surface detection technology to deter sidewalk riding and introduce comprehensive sidewalk riding educational campaigns to ensure that folks really know how important it is to stay off the sidewalk. However, as we have mentioned before, deploying real-time active throttle technology poses significant risks, which is highlighted by our insurer, Apollo, and our research outlined in Attachment B and F.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you, Charlie, your time is up. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Good luck.
Mayor, final speaker on this item is Alec Friedman. Alec, you will have 90 seconds, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Yes, hi, you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, hi, good evening, council and good evening, Mayor. I live on the border of Hollywood and West Hollywood and I do, you do visit West Hollywood daily for personal and business reasons and so I walk every single day and yes, I definitely sympathize with the local residents who run into those issues, including myself. Numerous times, I've almost tripped on one of those scooters or e-bikes or also a few times I've been nearly hit, so I definitely agree that this is an issue. However, I disagree with a total ban of this form of alternative transportation. It's almost like, same with bicycles, many bike riders, they run on the sidewalks, they cause dangers to society, it doesn't mean we have to ban bikes, correct? So I think the middle ground between those who completely oppose and those who want to totally support, I think it's option number two. I think we need more time to look into this more seriously and I think the major issue is to step up the enforcement. We need to enforce the laws and I mean really enforce them, because right now there's total impunity, there's total lawlessness, there's total anarchy. People just get away with anything, illegal parking, you know, illegal riding on sidewalks. So I think the city of West Hollywood should really step up the patrol, including block by block, with all the sheriffs, that something needs to be done to enforce. So once again, I support option number two, we need to continue monitor this program. If it doesn't work out, if the public safety issues continue to skyrocket, then we need to ban it.
Thank you, Alec. Thank you, Alec, your time is up. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Mayor, that was our last speaker.
Thank you. I have a question for staff. The Bird, their, the throttling technology that they agreed to, what was the speed they were going to throttle down to?
They said walking speed, so I think that's about three miles per hour, but we do have a representative from Bird if they could respond.
Yeah, that would be great to get an accurate.
Four miles per hour.
Four miles per hour. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Byers?
Thank you. To staff, so in our last conversation, the direction from this council was to ensure that our providers were able to do the throttle-down technology on sidewalks. Since that time, we learned from one of those providers that doing so in totality is not within their scope of work and planning due to their concerns regarding safety of the users of the devices. The other provider who was able to create the sort of parameter geo-fencing, which is limited, did so noting a safety concern for users also beyond the scope of what they were able to implement, correct?
Correct.
So safety of the user on the device is the focus of why the companies aren't doing that.
Correct.
Okay. So I think that's information to this council, since we've last made that direction. I don't know that this council was interested in implementing policy that was less safe to the users of the scooters in the interest of making sure the totality of this program is wholly safe for our community. So I just want to note that since this report and this request has been made to get more information, we now know that the safety, this technology may not be the safest route, period, for these devices. So I just want to note that, because it's a big sort of adjustment in thinking and the emphasis that sidewalk down-throttle technology is what makes a permanent program in the city, I think should be thinking, we throw out the window frankly, if we're going to continue to think that safety is the goal and the focus. I'm wholly in favor of making this program permanent, for folks out there nodding who may think this is going a different direction, but I want to say these two things at once, that creating a permanent program cannot be at the expense of the user on the scooter itself and we have to think about the safety of those users on the scooters as well. And I'm sure there are folks who are thinking it would be totally safe for a person to not be on a scooter, period, but I want to remind us of the larger priority that this program came around, which was an opportunity to get people safely onto alternatives of transportation that contributes to our climate goals in big ways. And what I noted in option one, which was removing this program completely, was a failure to meet some of those initial goals, providing alternatives to our community, providing climate action, actionable goals through a transportation structure. So I'm not in favor of removing this program at all, I want to find a way to get towards permanence and as we begin this discussion, I just want to put those two things firmly on the table and I'll stop for a second.
Okay. Other colleagues? Councilmember Meister.
Thank you. First, I want to thank Brad Kiesler coming to speak because he is a perfect example of a responsible rider and as you saw, he had his helmet with him and it's his e-bike, he owns that e-bike, he is, he is a responsible e-bike rider and owner. And what we are talking about here is a different thing. We are not saying that e-bikes or scooters that are, that people own can't be used, we are saying we don't want to use services like Lime, or we may be saying that we don't want to use services like Lime or Bird or whoever, doing the rent-a-scooter thing because they're not responsible. We have a pilot that lasted two years, this program has not lived up to the hype. In the beginning, we were told the companies would take responsibility for their e-bikes and e-scooters, picking them up, all of that, getting them off the street, they did not. We were told that the program, the program would not cost the city, which was one reason we ended the city's e-bike program. We found out that it did cost the city, in fact, it cost the city $145,000 a year, plus staff time, plus facilities for the bikes and e-bikes and scooters that we had to pick up. And we were told that the technology to keep, that there would be technology to keep e-scooters and e-bikes off the sidewalks and there is not. We were told that docking of the dockless vehicles would not be a problem, it's a problem. This pilot, this two-year pilot, has shown us that we cannot rely on these companies to be responsible. They don't care if their riders are under 18, they don't care if they ride two on a unit, they don't care if they don't wear helmets, they don't care if someone is over the weight limit, they don't care if a bystander gets hit or hurt, they don't care if their riders don't have insurance, and they don't care if their units are left blocking the public right-of-way or on a parkway or in the middle of the street. I think the pilot has run its course and it's time to be done. I will say that, yes, there are benefits of micro-mobility e-bikes and e-scooters, but I don't think that this is the answer. I think that just as we are doing a bike giveaway program to get people on bikes, to give them their own bikes, that is a more responsible way of doing this. I don't think that the benefits outweigh the problems. Saving a balloon full of GHD doesn't help me if I end up at Cedars. Now regarding the survey that is being done or that's still in progress, the survey may have 400 or 500 or 600 responses, that's not the issue, so yes, it might be statistically significant, however, the problem is who is answering the survey? It is, that is what's not being done correctly. How we have done other market, research studies with companies like FM3 is that they get a list of residents of the city of West Hollywood, whether that's a voter list or however they get their list of residents, and then they do a survey either by phone or they do it by email, but we know that those people are actually residents of this city and that is what the mayor and I asked for. Not that we don't want other people's opinions, but we specifically asked for that, for a resident survey, and that's what the other survey, the survey that's being done now, does not provide. So I have always said that until we have the infrastructure, which means bike lanes, whatever that means, this is, this is going to be problematic and especially when we don't have partners that take their partnership seriously. So as far as I'm concerned, I am, I would stop the, stop the program, stop the pilot and let's go back to the drawing boards and think about safety. back to the drawing boards and think about safety, and think about infrastructure, and think about other ways that we can promote micro-mobility other than these types of rent-a-scooter in our city. Paris did it, we could do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to everyone who came out to speak tonight. I'm trying to look at these in as objective as, as an objective manner as possible. And I realize that I'm older than the typical scooter rider. When I look at these, they do provide, as Councilmember Byers pointed out, an alternate mode of transportation for people. I know that they do help, although marginally, in terms of addressing our climate goals. I also know that there are some people who use these to get to work, and some people, they don't have access to cars, and this provides them a mode of transportation. So I do acknowledge that there are some benefits to the program. But they also have created a significant safety problem for our community. We have riders who are irresponsible, who ride on the sidewalks, and their response is, well, there's no bike lanes. But then they leave the scooters on the sidewalk when they're not riding them, and that's not necessary. That's not the result of no bike lanes. That's the result of people who simply don't care about others who have to use those sidewalks. I also don't think this is safe for the riders. Many of them don't wear helmets. I've seen riders cross my street, La Cienega, diagonally in the middle of traffic. We've gotten complaints from a lot of people, and I know somebody has pointed out that a lot of those complaints generate from the same people. But those are all unique complaints about sidewalks being left on the sidewalks, scooter riders riding them recklessly on the sidewalks. And I agree with Councilmember Meister. We don't really have partners here. We have companies who are trying to exploit the demand in the community for these devices, and they have no interest in being partners with us. They have interest in simply doing things the way they want to do them. And as Councilmember Meister indicated, that has been the modus operandi from the get-go. So I am not supportive of continuing this program. I would love for us to have a way to provide micro-mobility devices that are safe in the community, but I don't think we can do that with the current partners, nor do I think we can do it with scooters at this time. So I support alternative one.
Mayor Protam Erickson.
Thank you so much, and thank you to all the members that came out tonight and spoke on Zoom and everyone that made their voices heard. Shocker to no one, I support alternative three, and I'm going to talk to you why. I just did a quick search on Amazon, so let's do the argument of go buy your own scooter. The top eight costs: $419, $559, $18.99 -- that better be a good scooter -- $439, $529, $319, $799, $389, for an average cost of $669. We talk about people who can't afford food, can't afford rent, and you're saying the reason is go buy your own scooter and deal with the laws. That's classist, and that's privileged to state that argument, in my opinion. Then we talk about we need to have bike lanes, and we need to have better infrastructure, and we need to have all of these things. I completely agree with that. I would love to have better infrastructure, as I know many of, I think we all can agree on that topic, right? We all want to make sure these things are safely off the sidewalks and onto the roads, but there's a historic disinvestment that didn't occur. We increased sidewalks, we increased roads, we had cars going constantly. It's a Class B highway. Fountain Avenue, which is supposed to be a neighborhood street, is a freeway, and we have people there that still bike in the shores and still ride scooters, and they do it. And let me tell you, it's going to be a long time before any of that infrastructure is anywhere put in place. I hate to break that glass bottle of optimism, but it's going to be a long time, so you can't wait. Because this cart is way down that hill, and the horse is saying, good luck catching up. Additionally, I have to state that I use these scooters. I use them to get to work when I take it up to the red line to try to get on transportation so I don't have to be in my car. And you want to know the thing I fear the most when I'm on one of these scooters? It's actually cars. Because I cannot, and I live on Fountain Avenue, and let me tell you, I have been almost hit multiple times by more cars than I can imagine. Even even when I'm walking over to Plummer Park, I was almost hit three times by a car, making a right hand on a red, by the way, or anywhere else, when I'm just trying to go play pickleball, for Christ's sake. You want to know what's more dangerous? People who are ignorant jerks in their cars who think that four wheels going 30 miles an hour, which is slow, is more dangerous than a scooter. That doesn't take away someone's complaint to understand that you're afraid of a scooter. I understand, and I want to make sure people are safe, and we have to do all that we can. But also the throttling, I don't support the throttling of the speed, and here's why. I was almost hit by a car on Fountain because that four-mile difference actually makes a lot of, a big deal when a car's going 45 miles next to you, and you're trying to take up the whole lane. Because remember, you can on Fountain, or you can or are encouraged to on Santa Monica Boulevard, or going down to Willoughby, or going down to a slower street. It doesn't stop. It won't matter. The cars have the right-of-way, and they are going to take you out. It doesn't matter who you are, where you are, what you're on. I do it on my e-bike. I love your e-bike as well. We enjoy it. But let me tell you, the scooters are a way to get, because I'm not going to go spend $600 on a scooter. It's just stupid. Like, I want to rent a scooter to be able to go someplace and get there, and it's an average thing that I can build into my monthly budgets to make sure I can take the train to and from work. It's not for everyone, but we want to try and create a system that gets a little bit of a compromise here, and people are not going to be happy with it either way. And to classify this as having compassion or not caring about people with disabilities or seniors or anything is just a reductionist argument, because we are up here every day trying to thread the needle to figure out this, because we see the numbers. In my neighborhood, in this, if you look on the map on page 13 of 21, the average for this two blocks is 37,900 to 43,561 trips. That's more people than live in the city of West Hollywood. And that's insane for that being happening from July 21, July 20, 21 through May 2023. I understand people's concerns, but I also have to tell you that I hear and understand people taking scooters because they don't have cars. People aren't offering parking in their apartment buildings. Parking is also extremely expensive, and some people don't want to be in a car anymore. And I just have to say that I support alternative three because I'm done kicking the can down the road. And I have lots of respect for people who come up here and say, ban the scooters, I hate the scooters, I don't like this, I don't like that, or maybe I do like this and I want to fight for it. We need to make a decision tonight, because this, frankly, conversation is old and tired, and we're getting nowhere, but we're arguing with each other on an item that we're trying to find a compromise on. And I think ultimately, alternative three is our best option, because I think that way it says that we're dedicated to doing this, we want to make it work. But I understand that everyone's going to like it, but that's where I'm at tonight. And I just have to say that, at the end of the day, no one's going to be happy with the decision up here tonight, and that's our job to deal with, and you get to hold us accountable.
Councilmember Byers?
Yeah, I just want to underscore some of what was said by Mayor Protam Erickson. The data point I was looking for was that vehicle-to-pedestrians number. It was on the slide where scooter-to-pedestrians stated there was two collisions, but vehicle-to-pedestrians was 95 in the same period of time? That's, yes, that's correct. Yeah, so I mean, just to go back to the point, it's hard to have a conversation about the threats in our community from a transportation and mobility standpoint when we're not taking seriously the threats about cars and vehicles and how these scooters are meant to mitigate some of that concern. So we're just on a spectrum of figuring out the best way to make each of these mobility options safe for people, but to throw this one out completely is also not an option I'm interested in. I want to, if we're going to continue this conversation and looking at the alternative three for implementation, I think there are ways we can make that program better for our community, certainly when it comes to some of the fee scheduling that we're looking at, some ways to get, you know, more significant, greater contracting and funding back to us. I'm also interested in looking at the ABM parking component of that. From what I understood from the staff report was that we had been contracting with ABM for that service for the second year of the pilot, not the first year of the pilot.
It started August 2021, so it was the first year?
Okay. So it's been running concurrent with the entire program?
Correct.
Okay, that's helpful. Great. Then I'm interested in seeing the conversation move towards how we can bring alternative three online, but I know you have not spoken, so that's where I'm at.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone who spoke as well on this for many, many months now. I'm also looking at this objectively, and I, and I agree with Mayor Protam Erickson, whatever we come up with, I don't think either side is going to be happy. But what I see before us is, unfortunately, a bad contract that has not given us enough financial benefit, as well as not enough safety in place for folks that are pedestrians. And at the same time, we have to weigh safety for riders. There are a lot of riders using this technology, and if I look at this objectively, the number of ridership compared to the number of injuries is very low. It said one accident per month compared to many, 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 many trips. That means there are many, many people that are utilizing and enjoying this service. However, the way it has run has not worked optimally. So I'm not sure I, I don't agree with alternative one at this point, and I'm not sure I'm at alternative three. What I want to see is exactly this. I would like us, and I, by the way, the speed throttling technology that I really want to push for, after many conversations, I understand that it's very unsafe for riders. So I don't want it to be a situation then that we are making people that are passing policies that then create worse safety for riders either. And I would like us to have a speed limit. San Jose has a citywide speed limit of 12 miles per hour. Other cities have 12 miles per hour. Washington DC has a speed limit of 10 miles per hour. We are a small city, and we don't have the infrastructure necessarily in place to have this speed throttling technology. If we have the bike lanes in place, the speed throttling would be safer. But for now, I think the safest thing to do is a citywide 10 mile per hour speed limit, and this goes for all, for the two, the two companies participating in this program. As far as the throttling tech, I'm open if we, if BIRD thinks that this, these routes is actually safe. I don't know if, Councilmember Byers said that the throttling technology may not really be safe in these areas that they've indicated. Is that right?
BIRD selected these routes based on their determination of infrastructure and volume of trips, so we can assume that they do believe that it's a safe area.
Okay. So if that's the case, then how about we have the speed throttling technology that they have instituted in those routes as well? Unless they want to speak, unless we have information that is otherwise. And I want each company to be treated the same. I also want us to get better financial, be in a better financial position. So I would like us to have, from based on this chart, the annual fee of $25,000, which Long Beach is getting. The per-device fee, I have here of $100. The per-trip fee as well, of 40 cents per trip. There's a lot of trips happening in the city of West Hollywood, and if there's two vendors, that means each company is going to be making a bigger share because there's only two. I also would like a policy compliance fee. I don't really understand how this point penalty schedule up to $200,000 works, but it sounds pretty good to me. So it encourages them to comply with our policies. I'm also not happy that we're paying for ABM. Now, I know that they have fleet services. I don't know how their fleet services would work. Maybe if the policy compliance is higher penalty to them, then their fleet services would have an advantage of doing better. But perhaps we can charge them a, some kind of fee to cover ABM's costs so that we can ensure that the company we contract for is charged to them in that same fee that we charge. So then, since they've essentially for two years have had the most incredible contract and a lot more revenue by being in our city, we are now flipping it and recouping two years of really not having a really, really bad contract and giving too much, now we want to get back. And I think that would be something that our residents that are upset that we've had a bad deal would then feel better, and it would help the safety issues. I also want to get that survey, that statistical survey. And Councilmember Meister, I actually didn't want that to just be for residents. I want it to be our residents separated out, so we know what the residents feel, but also other community members as well. And it gives us more data points.
But we have to do it in a way that we actually know that the residents are residents.
Yes, yes, of course. And hopefully our vendor that does the work can do that. So that's where I am on this. I guess I'm in the middle here.
So, as, may I?
Yeah.
Thank you. I know you said 10 miles an hour. That I would say is very slow, and I know it seems not slow. I don't, but I would ask or suggest 12 miles an hour. That's the, I think that's the number I've been seeing and reading in these reports. I think that, especially with our streets being very fast with the cars going, I think the operators of the scooters would be setting targets at 10 miles an hour personally.
And I wanted to just jump in to clarify a comment that was a little misconstrued. I had indicated, or you had said that I indicated that the safety along the corridors where the sidewalk technology downthrottle was implemented was less safe. As a user on the scooter, I absolutely feel less safe in those moments when the jerking is happening, because it's the lack of consistency. As a user, you may not see or visually know that that corridor is coming up, but you certainly feel it on your scooter, and the vehicles behind you certainly feel a difference and will get very much closer to you when that downthrottle occurs. So as a user in that experience, I'm grateful that the companies were able to find it, but the experience of being on it hasn't made for a consistently smooth or safe feeling, which is why I think a speed limit that is capped at that downthrottle speed of 12 miles an hour that those scooters go down to seems like a reasonable way to move forward. We're lowering the speeds on the outset. It was mentioned a marathon runner can go that fast. If we have people running through our community at speeds this fast, a scooter can travel. Yeah, sure. But I believe the average bicycle rider without an e-bike can also travel around these speeds. So people are already traveling at this speed. It's a familiar speed, and if the scooter companies can both, the current ones we have online can both comply, that seems reasonable.
I would, I thank you for clarifying because you use the scooters, and I understand that because we rode them. And I certainly want to make sure that scooter riders are safe, and if jerking is happening and downthrottling that fast, I don't want people on scooters getting killed on the street. getting killed on the streets either because we don't have the infrastructure just yet. However, I am actually, I think 10 miles an hour for our city is, is, and I, I had a conversation with one of the vendors and we discussed the different speeds and they were open to 10 at that time. There was no mention of this is unsafe. So I'm, if we're not going to do throttling just yet, I'm more adamant on 10 miles per hour. And I think that gives our residents a more, a more that the ones that are on the street safer. There's a big difference between 15 and 10. 15 and 12, not so much. And a marathon speed running, depending on how fast you go, is usually supposed to be 17 miles per hour because I did two marathons and I could not do 17 miles per hour. I walked, it took me forever, but I did two marathons and finished them. But I think Councilmember Heilman could probably attest to us since he's a marathoner.
But not at 10 miles an hour. Not at even five miles an hour.
So, yes.
Can I ask you a question? Who is going to be making sure about the speed limit? Is this something that's going to be part of the technology? Or is this going to be the sheriffs?
Well, the tech, you cannot, so I will, I can attest, Councilmember Meister, sorry. Like when that thing goes 10 miles an hour, you know you're going 10 miles an hour.
But I'm saying the technology makes.
Oh, yes.
Can.
Oh, yeah.
Can cap it.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, you, you feel it too.
I just want to also mention, because it hasn't been, I think it was in the LIME proposal, there was a number of proposals or recommendations that they've made or offers even about how they would help encourage and educate around pedestrian interactions more. And I think those are absolutely things we want to bring online. And if these are ways that these companies can better partner with us in our community, be more visible, show up at events, provide, add campaign text and, you know, work all of that thing, that's exactly the sort of thing that we need more of, is that sort of support and education and responsibility coming from the companies directly to the users of these devices. I get frustrated being often grouped in with the, you know, the bad users, but they're out there. We see them all the time. I help drag the scooters across the sidewalks when they're blocking the way. It's out there all the time. And in all the ways, when we pick up trash, when we see ways that we can make our community better, I hope people are also out there doing that for your fellow neighbor and helping move these things, even if you're not using them. It's something we can all do to be better neighbors for, and especially those of us who get out on bikes and, you know, are supportive of this. I just hope we're all being good in that way. When it, yeah, sorry, did you want to jump in?
No, no, go ahead.
Okay. I think that's all I had to say.
Thank you. So those are my, that's where I am. I, I'm not comfortable doing a permanent one because we still haven't gotten the survey result. And that's what, that's the word, that's, I gave my word to the public and we all did, so.
How long is the survey? When is that, when's the next?
Yeah, so we're scheduled to, we were scheduled to come back with the results of the survey in October, which is at the time that the pilot program is going to end. Okay. So we were going to comment that meeting in October, which provided with all that information. So if maybe this might.
So if we're going to substantially change the speed, it actually, I think a better way to do this is to extend the pilot longer if we can, because now we're having different contract terms, which is good for the city, but also substantially putting a different speed limit so that people's experience may be different as well. So I'm not sure if this goes online. How long can all of, all of this happen for us?
So what I was going to propose is perhaps what we can do is renegotiate the contracts with these new requirements for our existing vendors, provide them with the information, put that into contract. We can come back with the survey results. We can do all of that in that October meeting. You can review the requires, make sure that we have that done right. And then if everything's done right, we can then authorize the contracts at that moment.
Okay.
And extend it for as long as the council wishes at that time.
Got it, okay. I think that, that, that's where I am.
I think, given that, then I will try to make a motion if possible. So the motion would be to continue forth with the survey, coming back in October, renegotiate the contracts to include the various fees. I'm going to try and capture all of them.
Is there a time limit for them to finish renegotiating?
Yeah, so they would come back in October with the contracts and renegotiating everything. So that way we would approve the contracts in October, right? Is that what you just said?
Correct.
No. I think a contract should be negotiated, renegotiated as soon as possible, not in October. Including the, the, when will the 10 mile per hour ban happen? Are the citywide speed limit? When can that happen? What's the soonest, I think that's the most urgent thing.
Yeah, we can request that of the vendors now.
Okay.
It will take time to just go through the contracting process in order to get that finalized. But if in good faith they can do that tomorrow or, you know, in a week, that'd be fantastic. But it does take some time to get that contract renegotiated.
Okay.
Well, in the alternative, we could continue the program only upon condition that they implement immediately a 10 mile speed limit.
Yes.
Fantastic.
Yeah, good, thank you.
So, okay, so you want the, okay, we're going to pause for a second. So you want the contracts renegotiated as soon as possible, but essentially what Councilmember Heilman said by negotiating, did you capture that, John and Paige? And did you?
Yes, the pilot program continues only if they implement the 10 miles an hour.
Great. And then you're in the background doing the survey, finishing that up, and then renegotiating the specific fees that Mayor Shine was requesting. And then this is applied equally to both companies. Am I missing anything?
Do you want me to go through each one again?
No.
Staff, take notes?
I have the annual fee of 25,000, the per device fee of 100, the per trip fee of 40 cents, and the policy compliance fee.
Policy compliance fee and.
Fee to cover ABM.
And.
And the cover, a fee to cover ABM.
And Councilmember Byers, the outreach that LIME was offering, both companies doing that kind of outreach and to the community.
So do we want to set those as target fees? Or do we want to say that if they don't agree to those fees, we end the program?
I think if they don't agree with those fees, we end the program.
Yeah, that's fine by me.
And.
We end the contract and maybe another, maybe another, we, we end our contract with those vendors. And if another vendor wants to come to the table, then that's a different story because there's other vendors that have contacted me that are excited to come to the city. So then maybe we open it up to them. So we're saying this is what it takes for you to come to our city.
So the program wouldn't end just the contract with that company?
The contract with them and perhaps others, there's a lot of other players out there.
Okay, so I think what we will do will, as you mentioned, we'll try and implement as soon as possible the 10 miles per hour, otherwise the pilot will not continue. We'll bring back a template contract with all these new negotiated terms at that October meeting so that you can review it and hopefully either of these companies agree to it, or maybe some new companies will agree to it. And that will be sort of the contract moving forward and we can refine that as we go. And we will complete the survey, bring back those survey results, both the online survey and the randomized phone survey statistically valid all across the board. And I think those are all the items. And the speed throttling, apply that equally.
I think the speed throttling, we decided that it's, it's still, given the experience of the users, a little dangerous. And I think what we can do when we decide a permanent program is, I mean, that's in the future. We could discuss how we would want to do that in the future based on infrastructure and bike lanes and when that comes into play.
Great, thank you.
And then also, can this please go to Transportation Commission before coming to us? I heard from pretty much every member of the Transportation Commission about why they didn't get any type of input on this. And that's what they're there for. And I think we should rely on them in that way.
Yes, Mayor Protam.
I'm, I'm just saying, you know, it didn't go to them. I mean, frankly, it should have, right?
Thank you, Mayor.
I mean, yes, I mean, yeah.
I mean, this is a pilot program, so we can do, you know, whatever direction the council gives us, we will follow.
Mayor?
Yes?
Are you going to include insurance requirements in all this?
Insurance requirement goes on, in play on July 1st by the state.
Not very much.
I think that, I think that is, that is already in, in place by the state and that, that is, that is adequate as a state law.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is the motion clear to everyone before we vote? Yeah, okay. Let's start voting. The motion passes noting the no votes of Councilmembers Heilman and Meister.
All right, moving to item 5C, special council programs, initiatives, and events. I don't, we don't need a staff presentation for this because I just had a couple of quick questions from staff. Or city manager. Hi, in the, in the definition for recommendation number three, I just want to understand, I understand what a new study is. What exactly is the definition of programs or projects?
So I think it's generally things that are not council, are not events. I think typically the events are the ones that come up the most frequently, frequently or have the least impact on work plans and work programs. I think if it's a new program or a pilot or looking at some type of project, those would be the ones that would go to the next budget cycle.
Got it. I just wanted to make sure, because program could have kind of been event, that is, the events are completely separate.
Yes.
Okay.
It's not included.
That was my only question. Do we have any public comments on this item?
I don't have anyone in chambers.
None in Zoom either.
Okay.
I, I have one comment too. I was also a little bit concerned about sort of an absolute ban on, on studies and, you know, there are things that might come up where it's consistent with the staff's work plan. So I want to make sure that this has some flexibility, that not everything necessarily has to go to next year's work plan if it's, if the council is responding to an urgent item in the community. So I, I'm confident that our city manager will understand that when those things arise. I, I also think that we as a council also need to be prepared to say no sometimes to people who are requesting cosponsorships of events. Sometimes they, they appeal to maybe a small but very vocal group and it may be better for us to try to say no and see how we can incorporate organizations or entities into an existing program that we have.
So no speakers on this? All right, so we can.
Oh, what happened?
Oh, I'm so sorry, Councilmember Meister, I didn't see. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, when we talked about the idea of having studies happen, you know, with staff the next fiscal year, whether the next, you know, when program, when they, when their work plans allow for it, was really more about not using this budget to be a, a budget that, you know, that floats a $75,000 study because then we don't have a budget left. But I understand where Councilmember Heilman is coming from. I do think that we really need to review ongoing events. I know we have a lot of one offs here and there, but we have to review ongoing events and, and look at attendance and look at the programs that are being provided and the promises that are being made to us in terms of what the other party is bringing to the party in terms of marketing, in terms of, you know, I think there's been just a, too much reliance on our staff to make sure that events happen and are well attended when we're cosponsoring. We're trying to help, we're trying to give a facility, waive fees, do this, do that, even provide, you know, funding. And then, and then it ends up that we are, you know, paying a lot of money to have, you know, 30 or 40 people come at $50 a person. And if we see a trend when we're, you know, with, especially with ongoing events, that that it's, the event is not bearing as well as we anticipated that it would, I think we have to, we have to really stay on top of it and either, you know, decrease, decrease our funding or, you know, say this is not working for us or rethink the event to make it something that's more, that's, that's going to be more successful.
I think that once we have the, there was a funding request to have a special events person, I believe, either in the budget or in this item. I think once we have a, someone with, or consultants with events expertise, that will be helpful as well. Because a lot of the feedback I've gotten is that our staff is often so, spread so thin that they don't have the ability to really promote an event. Sometimes events are, like you said before, all scheduled all at the same time and then it's, it's too many things happening.
Yeah.
You know, and so I'm not sure if cutting funding is the key. I think doing it in a way that maybe promote, promote, we promote it better and communicate better might help.
You know, giving 3,000 or 5,000, that's a different story. I'm talking about, you know, we have given $75,000 for events.
Sure.
Where we should be, we should not be expected to be the ones to put on the event.
Got it.
And to provide the programming and to provide the marketing.
Okay.
That's a lot of money and, and there needs to be responsibility by those people who are getting that cosponsorship.
Got it.
And if I, if I may add, that is something that, hi, I'm here. My name is Yvonne Corker, Director of Community Services. And that is something that we're looking at, Councilmember Meister, for communal legislative affairs, for the cosponsorship events and the community events. We've put together a spreadsheet and we're monitoring that. And I think as the mayor says, once we have this team on contract, that we can continue to monitor that, how much we're spending, how many people are in attendance, and then bring something back to, I believe there was a subcommittee at a later date, once we have the data to try to look at legacy events, new events, if it should have just been one event that year, but not necessarily every year or we change, change the event. That's something that we're definitely looking at.
All right. Yes, oh.
I, I just want to say that the last budget, not this year's, we're not even there yet, but the one before, you know, the mayor and I did sit on the special events subcommittee. We did make some recommendations. They were not, and they were event based and people lost their collective cookies. And then we all caved, not this council, like Chelsea and Councilmember Byers and Councilmember Heilman weren't here. And we gave in and that was part of a headline that made the news, right? But like, I'm just saying that if you actually, if we actually do mean to hold that line, we actually do have to hold the line because, to use your numbers, because I appreciate when you ask per cost, per head, the attendance on those events and the other ones were, were extremely low and the equity from that to the arts compares comparatively was just, there was a huge gap. So I agree with what Councilmember Heilman said. I think we have to say no. I don't do it well, so I'll try to challenge myself. But I, I do think that this maybe then is a battling cry to all of us. Like, for example, David, the pickleball tournament that was this past weekend, I shouldn't have to do an annual item for every year because there was like 400 people that, I mean, there was this pact, right? So it should just be added to this list, in my opinion, for recreation to build into because apparently pickleball's not going anywhere, right? So that's what I mean. Like, that's a good event because, and it brings in money too, so.
Yeah, no, and I, and I agree with you. And I think one thing that we did do, and I know that one of the events was. And I think one thing that we did do, and I know that one of the events was the Yam Heshua event, however, if you went to the one that happened this past year, there were at least 100 people in this room because they changed the type of event that it was. We did a screening and it was very, very well attended. So what I'm saying is then let's look at it and see how we change it to make it better or more cost effective.
I think also coming out of the pandemic will be different too because some of the numbers we're looking at were kind of pandemic-y. So, okay, let's, can we go to a vote, please? Excellent. Now we're moving on to the big item of the evening. Before we get to that, let's take a five minute break and come back. So it is 10:09. Let's come back at 10:15, so. Six minute break. Please return to your seats. We are going to move to item 5D, the fiscal year 2023 to 2024, second year update to the city's two-year operating budget and capital work plan. Oh, hi Christine. Get your staff presentation, please.
So Christine is going to do the presentation if the council wants one. But I just, I see some heads shaking, so I'll let you all.
Yeah, I don't need a presentation.
I'll let you all decide. Councilmember Heilmann pulled to you the agreements for Tennessee assistance and dispute resolution with the Coalition for Economic Survival and DG Mediation. He mentioned that he wanted to add additional funding to the contract. If you are going to look at that, maybe we do that during this discussion until waiting for the excluded consent because it does have a budget impact.
I think.
Yes, okay. I asked to hold this. First of all, thank you for all of your work and David for all of your work and Lorena, the whole team, thank you for doing this update. I want to make sure we had talked about perhaps adding back an additional sheriff's deputy and we agreed that we were going to look at that sort of in December when we did the next public safety update. I want to make sure that we will have sufficient funds to do that if we decide to go in that direction. So I'm asking you and the city manager, have you contemplated that?
We haven't added the funding for that additional deputy now. We would add it at that time when we come back in December as part of that discussion.
But you're comfortable that we would have sufficient resources if we did decide to do that?
Yes.
Okay. And then the second issue on item 2U, that's one, I guess, one small item, but the bigger concern I have is with respect to housing with the moratorium on rent increases expiring. I think we're going to see increased and we've already seen some increases in Ellis Act evictions. I want to make sure that we have the resources available to assist people. And part of the reason I pulled to you is I think we need to be expanding that contract, not just giving them the minor cost of living increase that all other contracts have received. It seems to me that they have done a lot of work. Some of the issues that we talked about tonight with respect to short-term rentals, it's really the result of that outreach being done in a way that our RSD staff isn't doing. So I think it's important that we look at expanding that contract rather than just a continuation. So those were the two things that I wanted to raise and I don't know how my colleagues feel about that.
I think they've done a phenomenal job and it is true that a lot of the input we've gotten from CES with their tenant clinics has been the basis of a lot of actions we've taken since they've been online and they meet with a lot of residents. And so their contract is absolutely valuable and if councilmember Heilmann, you feel that expanding it so that they maybe get what, like another part-time person or?
I don't know what the expansion is. Maybe we can give direction to our city manager to look at that and negotiate, whether it's expanding the hours we have from the person who is currently there or adding additional assistance to them. I would also add that I think our staff needs to treat them as a partner. And I think sometimes there's a bit of frustration that I've heard that they're being treated like an outside agency rather than a partner with the city in implementing our RSD ordinance and really trying to make sure that we're enforcing it appropriately.
Okay, yes, we can come back with something. So if the council agrees, we can approve the item tonight with the agreement, which is the amount that they recommended or said they needed for the current services, but we can work with them to negotiate for additional services based on that direction and come back in July or August.
I'm good with that. Everybody good? Any public commenters on 2UU? 2U? 2U?
2U, 2U too. We have one individual in Zoom and I do have some citizen position slips as well. So you can read those and then we can go to Zoom?
For 2U or for the budget?
For the budget.
Oh, I'm speaking about 2U because we kind of combined it.
Not for 2U.
Got it. Quick comment, councilmember Meister.
2U, to also add to what councilmember Heilmann brought up, I also think that CES needs to work with our code compliance department better because sometimes I feel like they're looking at code compliances, you know, like the tenants are looking at them as we heard tonight. And I think that CES has to understand also that they're our partner and they have to represent us in those discussions as well. So it's sort of a two-way street there.
I agree. So do we want to address 2U and?
Just.
Yeah, I would move that we approve 2U and give direction to the city manager as discussed to look at renegotiating and expanding their services.
So rather than using the system to do that, I will just indicate that we will approve item 2U as indicated with further direction that the city manager will negotiate additional resources into the contract. So I'll do a roll call vote on that now. Councilmember Byers?
Yes.
Councilmember Heilmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Meister?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Erickson?
Mayor Shine?
Yes.
The motion passes.
But I'm prepared to approve the budget too.
Oh, now we're just moving on to approve the budget too? Oh, that was all we had. Oh, my goodness, I'm so excited tonight. So I'll read the citizen position slips. We'll hear from the individual in Zoom for the budget item. Michael Carter supports item 5D. Polly Bizzinger or Buzzinger supports the item with additional funds for code enforcement. So now we will move to our one individual in Zoom. Oh, now we have two.
Our first speaker on Zoom for this item is Christopher J., to be followed by Sam Elbaz. Christopher, you will have two minutes. Please press star six to unmute yourself. Christopher, oh, there you go.
Okay, perfect. Good evening, my name is Christopher. I'm a fellow gardener at Detroit Community Gardens on North Detroit in West Lexington. As some of you may or may not know, the community gardens program is ending at the end of the year due to a residential development going up in this location, thus ending the only public community garden in our city. I publicly urge public parks and facilities to allocate the appropriate funds in their budget for fiscal year 2023, 2024 to prioritize the search for a temporary location for the garden from when we are moved from our current location until when a permanent location is finally designated and approved for the garden. My hope is that by this time next year, we talk about the success of this continuation or relocation of the garden and not the termination of this very popular and beloved program by all our neighbors. Also, just a special thanks to councilmember Lauren. Also, just a special thanks to Councilmember Lauren Meister, as I understand she had a hand in helping the past and current iterations of this garden to get off the ground. Thank you. Oh, by the way, if this is more appropriate for general public comment, by all means, consider it as such.
Thank you, Christopher. Our next speaker on this item is Sam. Sam, you will have two minutes. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Perfect, thank you. I'd like to echo Christopher's excellent comments. I myself, Sam Elbaz, am a fellow gardener at the Detroit Community Garden and have been absolutely loving my time there, and am dismayed about the discontinuation of the garden come November, but am more so worried about the long-term permanent solutions that our community can allow for public gardening space, as well as opportunities for communities together. I'd like to formally share, or formally urge, the, the committee, the council, to please consider creating permanent opportunities for community gardens within the budget for the years 2023 to 2024. An excellent solution for short-term planning may be a variety of places that are underdeveloped or undeveloped for the following year, and then looking at more permanent solutions in our public park spaces. I know that we live in a very creative city that is committed to our community, and it really reflects that. This would be an excellent opportunity to reinforce that, reinforce that commitment in another form of our public spaces. I thank you for this kind of speaking. I would love to seek more and further opportunities as this continues to be a top-of-mind matter. And if this is better suited for public comment, as Christopher noted, please consider it so as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, that was our last.
So we have a motion?
Hi, I'm on public comment.
We're not on public comment, so please mute yourself.
Mayor Protem has a comment.
And I just, I just want to reiterate for the Sam and Christopher that last year, right, I know the council, or two years ago, the council gave direction for city staff to look for a permanent location for the garden. I know it's obviously not as fast as people want, and obviously, we respect and want to make sure people know that the garden is a priority. We did give that direction. I know the city staff is looking into it, as well as the Plumber Park Subcommittee work, that's all being done hopefully soon, but as part of whatever that would look like in the future, but that is a part of it. And I do believe the public, whatever the new name for the Public Facilities Commission is, it's on their agenda for their next meeting to discuss the community garden as well. So if you wanted to, to attend that one, it'd be great for you to voice your opinions there as well. But thank you, Mayor, for this, let me say that.
All right, let's, any other comment? Councilmember Meister?
Thank you. Yeah, as, I know that we're going to be approving this budget, and, and I really appreciate staff's work on this, and everyone listening to us, and somehow making it all happen. It must be, must be that billboard that got approved tonight. But I, I just want to make sure that, I, I know that we've all heard our residents, and what I've heard a lot about is, you know, what we discussed tonight, proactive code compliance, additional sheriffs, community gardens, and, and I hope that even if we, as we look for a permanent location, wherever that may be, that we continue to look for those temporary locations. We have, we have so many developments that have been given, given approvals that are sitting there, you know, and when they can be used for something, they sit there for, for two or three years. And so I hope that we continue to have our, our facilities, Helen, looking for opportunities for the community gardens. You know, how we spend our money shows our priorities, and in a dense city like West Hollywood, community gardens make life better for people who don't have a place of their own to garden. So it, it also contributes to our climate action goals, and community gardens can be used for educational purposes, can even provide food for the gardener or others. So, you know, there is, there is really a value to, to community gardens. I'd like to see resiliency, and I've discussed this with, with our city manager, resiliency to be in our work plan as a, as a priority. Resiliency has to do with, you know, public safety and emergency preparedness, but it also has to do with climate action and dealing with climate change. And, you know, not, each one of those areas, they're not isolated. Everything has an effect on the other, and what resilience does is make us think about, make us think about the picture, a broader picture, looking at those things and making, and making that a priority as we move forward. Also, historic preservation, and I, I wanted to ask the city manager if, if there are staff openings in current and historic planning. I don't know if that, if there's an opening, if there are openings right now, but for us to really seriously consider bringing in somebody who, who, it doesn't, it would be somebody who is a planner, but somebody who has an interest in historic preservation and a background in historic preservation, so that, so that, you know, we're, we're, as a city, we're getting older. It's just not me getting older, it's, the whole city's getting older, and, and it makes historic preservation that much more important. So, and I also hope that we can find a community development director that, that has an interest in historic preservation as well. And then I just wanted to, my last comment on this is just, I think we have to be very careful with metrics and performance measurements, how we, how we do that. You know, just as an example, on, under city attorney, the performance measure was based on, one of the performance measures was based on reducing legal and litigation costs. And, and while I understand that saving money for the city by reducing litigation is very, very important, as a resident, I would like to ensure that, that the city attorney's office is looking out for the best interests of the city's residents, which I know that, that the city attorney is, but it, it can't always be measured by how much money we save by not going into litigation. Sometimes it means going into litigation to protect our residents. So I, I just, you know, performance measurements and metrics are great, and, and they're important, and we have to have them, but we also have to think about how, how they're used. And let's not forget that we are people here and not just numbers. So with that, I'm ready to vote.
Motion passes. Wonderful. I may be on a roll of hitting my. Okay. Commission and Advisory Board appointments and reappointments.
Mayor, we do have one speaker for this item, if we want to hear from the speaker before we get into.
Yes.
Yes, perfect. Steve Dunwoody.
Hey. Good evening, Mayor Shine, Mayor Protem Erickson, members of the city council staff and, and residents of West Hollywood. I'm Steve Dunwoody. I'm a veteran and educator, and formerly an administrator at UCLA, where I worked to lead a center that led diversity, equity, and inclusion programs there on campus. I live across La Brea in Hollywood, but I, it's fair to say, I've done my fair share to contribute to the economy of West Hollywood here, it being a place of refuge and recreation for myself and so many in our community. So it is just with a little bit of surprise that last week, or I should say, the week before last, I had the opportunity to attend a flag raising of, at the Juneteenth commemorations, that I learned that the Social Justice Advisory Committee still has yet to have its full membership to be able to do its work, to quote, advise on social and racial equity issues and provide policy recommendations to the city council to address systemic racism for the city of West Hollywood. You know, as we're completing, you know, celebrations for Pride Month and, and Juneteenth just the other week, you know, it's important that this committee be able to do the work that it set out to do, especially at a time when we're seeing so much anti-black and anti-LGBT legislation all over the country, from here to, across the country, and programs to cut out DEI as well. So we don't have a moment to lose. It is not enough to raise a symbolic flag unless there are actions behind it. On this and other important issues, West Hollywood has been a beacon of light, you know, so don't dim it by allowing a shadow to fall on this most important work. So please make the remaining appointments to the Social Justice Advisory Board, and continue to show the world why West Hollywood.
Thank you, Mr. Dunwoody.
Is the beacon of progress, an equitable place, equitable place, and inclusive place as well. Thank you.
Steve, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Have you applied yet?
Have I applied?
Yeah.
I, I have not. I have not been asked to apply.
Maybe think about it.
I'll send you a link.
Thank you, I'll consider it. I'll consider it, thank you.
All right. So we are going to go to the appointments. Councilmember Haiman, are you prepared to make your appointment to the Social Justice Advisory Board this evening?
Yes, I'm appointing Jonathan Wilson.
Wonderful. Congratulations, Jonathan.
Thank you for your patience.
I love that he claps for himself, that's great.
Can that advisory board now be in effect regardless of whether we do the at-large? The Social Justice Task Force, because it hasn't.
It can, it can, but I'm ready to make at-large appointments this evening.
It's not, I apologize, but it's not on the agenda for the at-large appointment. But since we now have a quorum, they can begin meeting. So I will have it on there for the July meeting, to do the at-larges for the Social Justice Advisory Board.
So we're not going to do at-larges tonight?
We have at-larges for all of the ones that we either haven't completed, or had all of the direct appointments completed.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you. Now I understand.
So now, so we know that.
They're gonna, yes.
The task force, I mean, the advisory board can start.
Good.
And Steve can apply.
And Melissa, are you going to walk us through the various commissions that are on the agenda tonight?
I can do that if that's the council's desire, or, Mayor, do you want me to walk everyone through?
Or do you want to do it? I can, I can go ahead and do it. So we have Arts and Cultural Affairs. Are there nominations for Arts and Cultural Affairs? There are two at-large appointments.
I'll nominate Dan Faltz.
I'd like to nominate Sigourney Gunther.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear John Erickson, what was?
I nominated Dan, Dan Faltz.
And Councilmember Byers nominated Sigourney Gunther?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, the two at-large appointees to the Arts and Cultural Affairs Commission are Dan Faltz and Sigourney Gunther.
Excellent. Next, we have the Business License Commission. There are two at-large positions. I'll nominate Anthony Vullen. Any other nominations?
Can we hold on this? I have somebody who I think was submitting an application, who would talk to Melissa, a new applicant.
If it's.
Can we go ahead and appoint Anthony?
Yeah, because then there's one left of us, okay?
I'm good with that. I think we should do that wherever we can.
I think we should, I think we should get as many on tonight.
As many on tonight as possible. Okay, let's do it.
But I also don't want to feel pressured to do.
Don't meet until like the end of July, or whatever it means.
So, great, next.
Anthony Vullen, you are reappointed for another two term, it's another two years.
Let's say two terms.
So we, we have the Human Services Commission, and I will nominate Stephen Davis. Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Jimmy Palmieri.
Oh, yes, good.
Any others? Okay, so Stephen Davis, Jimmy Palmieri, welcome back, Stephen, and you are reappointed, Jimmy Palmieri, for another two years.
Because we know he's watching.
I spoke with him earlier.
I think also, Melissa, for the future, highlighting the ones that we have to nominate, but even if they've applied, will help, because that threw me off earlier.
Oh, so like, put, where I have yes next to them, maybe highlighting that?
Because I thought that meant they're appointed already, instead of, I'm lucky at the highlighted one, thank you.
Okay.
So next is the LGBTQ Commission. There's two positions, and I would like to nominate Valerie Milano and Ms. Tiger.
I would like to nominate Alec White and Kevin Berry.
I'd like to nominate, and I'm going to screw up his name, Chida Ebonaway.
That's right, that one.
I was going to nominate Trevor Ladner.
Oh, yeah.
Who did you nominate? Chida? I don't see Chida.
Chiedo Ebunaway.
Yeah, he's right there, we see you, sorry. I think it was a new memo that we got that was on our.
Yeah, I sent it on.
I see.
Yeah.
Friday, yeah.
Okay.
I'm wondering if it makes sense to hold if there's a new application that's just been submitted.
No, I think it needs to meet. I mean, that's just my opinion, but.
So we have Valerie Milano, Ms. Tiger, Kevin Berry, Alec White, Trevor Ladner, and Chiga. Is that all of them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So I'm just gonna call. Councilmember Byers?
Alec White and Ms. Tiger.
Councilmember Haiman?
Alec White and Chiedo Ebunaway.
Councilmember Meister? Mayor Protem Erickson?
Alec White and, I'm going to butcher your name, I was going to, I'm just going to say, Chida? Chido, sorry. So I apologize for butching your name, I will do better.
Chigu.
Can, can you?
Chigu.
I can't, I'm sorry.
Chigu?
Chido?
We're calling Chi. Chi, he's Chi.
Chi, got it, okay. I just wanted.
Mayor Shine?
I'm going to nominate Ms. Tiger, I mean, I'm going to vote for Ms. Tiger and Chi.
Okay, so Chi is one of the new at-larges, and then we need to.
Alec White got three.
Alec White had three votes as well.
Alec only, oh, you're right. Alec had three. You're right, my bad. So Alec White and Chi, Chi. Chi is our new alternate, and we will have it pronounced correctly moving forward. You are one of my appointed officials now, so, okay. So Alec White and Chi are our new at-large appointees to the LGBTQ+ Commission, where a full commission, we'd already decided your first meeting will be in July, so you will be hearing from me very quickly and from city staff on your meeting. So welcome.
Now, congratulations. Public Facilities Recreation and Infrastructure Commission, I would like to nominate, let's see. Santo Ragnow.
Can I nominate Deepa Krishna?
Sure. Any other nominations?
Yes.
Yes.
Yon and Benjamin.
Marker.
Benjamin Marker, Yon Jubrak.
Okay.
Any others? Okay, I'll do a vote. Councilmember Byers?
Santo and Deepa.
Councilmember Haiman?
Marker and Brak.
Yon Jubrak? Okay. Councilmember Meister?
Brock and Marker.
Mayor Protem Erickson?
Santo and Deepa.
Mayor Shine?
Santo and Deepa.
Okay. So the new at-large appointees to the Public Facilities Recreation and Infrastructure Commission are Santo Ragnow and Deepa Krishna.
Now we have the Rent Stabilization Commission. I would like to nominate Adam Bass.
I would like to nominate John Adams.
You don't have anybody, okay. Any other nominations?
Okay, seeing none. The new at-large appointees to the Rent Stabilization Commission are Adam Bass and John Adams.
Okay. Next, we have the Disabilities Advisory Board. There are four positions. I would like to nominate Rick Watts and David Nash.
I would like to nominate Wesley Schwartz, Mayor.
Any other nominations?
I had Rick and David and Logan.
That's four then.
So, Logan is, oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, is, okay, so that's four, so there's a-
There's more than four.
That's five.
She said Logan and Derek.
Oh, I didn't get Derek.
And then we have David and Rick, and-
Okay, so now we will vote. Okay, so the current-
Who's the fifth one? What did you nominate?
I got, I got Wesley Schwartz.
Wesley.
Yeah, so we have Rick Watts, David Nash, Wesley Schwartz, Logan Latham, and Derek Harden.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Byers.
David Nash, Rick Watts, Logan, and Wesley. Sorry?
Yeah.
That's four, okay.
Councilmember Heilman.
Rick Watts, Logan Latham, and David Nash, and I'm only voting for three at this point.
Thank you. Councilmember Meister.
Rick Watts, David Nash, Logan, and Derek.
So, Rick Watts, David Nash, and Logan are done, so now Mayor Pretam Erickson, it's Wesley Schwartz or Derek Harden.
I'm going to vote for Wesley Schwartz.
And Mayor Shine, Wesley Schwartz or Derek Harden?
Wesley Schwartz.
Okay, so Rick Watts, David Nash, Wesley Schwartz, and Logan Latham are the four at-large appointees to the Disabilities Advisory Board.
Congrats, congratulations.
Congrats, Russian Advisory, Russian-speaking Advisory Board. We have one, two, three, four positions available.
We had asked if Tatiana might interview and give us her feedback. I don't know if that's happened.
So, Tatiana did reach out to German Simakovsky and Ludmilla Roskin. She spoke with both of them, said that they would make good appointees. Valentina is a current appointed official, as well as Alex Tolchenko and Diana Volman. The only current at-large appointee who was not interested in reappointment is Ekaterina Kudipova.
So, I'll nominate Alex, Diana, German, and Ludmilla? Is that four?
Yep.
Alex, yes. Anyone else? Okay.
So, those are our- Did we have Diane?
I'm sorry?
Was Diane mentioned? Diane Bowman?
Diane, yes, so it was Alex Tolchenko, Diana Volman, German Simakovsky, and Ludmilla Roskin.
Okay.
Okay, so those are the new four at-large appointees to the Russian-speaking Advisory Board.
Great. And we have the Senior Advisory Board.
I'll, I'll do-
And, yeah, I apologize that-
Oh, is that, we can't do this one?
We can. I just, I apologize, Esther, still.
It's okay. She said that, she was, sorry, Esther's name is still on.
Okay.
I'll nominate Michael Hollingsworth and Ailee Walkup. That's only two, I know.
And I'm comfortable with just appointing them tonight and coming back for the remaining.
Thank you.
And obviously, the mayor will have a direct appointment as well.
Yeah.
I'm with that. Unless anybody else will, okay.
Okay, so Mayor Shine, I'll reach out to you separately about this, and then-
And I believe, and I love the shafis, they're great, they're great people, but I believe that they are under 25.
I assumed so based on their applications.
They were great, they're amazing people, they were volunteers at the city when I worked there, we love them, I'm just saying, I believe that they are, I don't think we have an, I don't actually know-
We don't have an age requirement.
There you go. Well, I'm happy they're interested, so keep them on, but I just didn't know if people knew that.
Yeah, I think the nexus, I saw that they worked with the older adult community, and so I think that was the nexus for them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Whatever.
All right, so, we will do the Social Justice Advisory Board at-larges at the next meeting, but the board will begin their work.
We have women's-
Work will begin.
And next is the Transgender Advisory Board. We have three, well, we have four positions available. I would like to nominate Shane Nash, Daniel Anthony Padia, A.J. Singleton, and Mallory Robinson.
I'm fine with that.
Any others? Okay, so the new at-larges for the Transgender Advisory Board are Shane Ivan Nash, Daniel Anthony, or Anthony Daniel Padia, A.J. Singleton, and Mallory Robinson.
And I would just like to wish Lucky Fuller a quick recovery.
Yes. What, oh, okay.
And Melissa, I just want to note my vote for Shane. I did not talk to the other people, so at this time, I'm not comfortable voting for them, but if the council is prepared to go forward, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Okay.
And last, but definitely not least, Women's Advisory Board.
We have four at-large positions. I would like to nominate Olivia Lane, Saaji Lazarus, Kat Lockwood, and Keely Field.
I would like to nominate Miriam Kaplan.
Okay, so I'll take a vote. Councilmember Byers.
I'll vote for Miriam, Olivia, Saaji, and Kat.
Miriam, Olivia, Saaji, Kat. Okay. Councilmember Heilman.
Olivia Lane, Saaji Lazarus, and Kat Lockwood.
Thank you. Councilmember Meister.
Keely Field, Kat Lockwood, Saaji, and Olivia.
Okay, so Olivia, Saaji, and Kat. So now it's between Keely and Miriam Kaplan. Mayor Pretam, you haven't voted yet.
Miriam.
Mayor Shine?
Keely Field.
Okay. We'll go back to Councilmember Byers, Keely Field or Miriam Kaplan?
Miriam.
Councilmember Heilman, Keely Field or Miriam?
I'm not ready to vote on either of them.
Okay. Councilmember Meister.
Keely.
It's a split. It's still a split, 2-2. Do we want to hold on that last at-large one till the next meeting, and for now, appoint Olivia, Kat, and Saaji?
That's fine.
Yeah, and maybe-
Does that work?
Councilmember Heilman can interview both of them.
And then I'll come back with the one at-large for the Women's Advisory Board at the next meeting. Woo-hoo, we're almost there.
Three or so more.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Very much. All right, so we, we don't have anything under New Business, everything got moved to Consent. We don't have anything on excluded Consent Calendar, so now is our last public comment period of the evening.
So, we will, we have our leftovers from earlier and a couple of more. So, our first one is Richard Eastman. And do you want, since we did 90 seconds at the beginning, do you want to keep it to 90 seconds?
Yes.
Okay, just for fairness.
Distinguished Council and Mayor Shine, and John Heilman in the city of West Hollywood. Oh, I only got 90 seconds. Well, I'm a former HIV/AIDS Commissioner for the county of Los Angeles, spending 60,000 people living with AIDS. Why didn't you ever appoint me to some commission? Because Alice Cooper and I, and The Rainbow, and The Roxy, and The Whiskey, we're doing a Hollywood sign party, because they're all dead. And that's going to be in December, December 8th, 100 years of Hollywood sign. And I talked to the mayor, thank you for the drag queen pageant, and my late friend Harvey Milk and Dennis Perone would be proud of you fighting for seniors against the stupid scooters. And the city that I helped create 50 years ago, even though you never talk about Valerie Tramiglio, the first lesbian mayor, and me singing with the Green Jello Band in Arizona the last three days, not being paid, and, and the hot dog guy that gave you $25,000 and you wouldn't let him sell on the corner, and you had all the Bandit hot dogs, and you still haven't got the camera up where the guy attacked me recently and stole my groceries, and, and I'm concerned about the health and welfare of the gay pride movement, where it's too expensive for young people and old people to see Grace Jones. And yeah, they gave me a $140 ticket to see Mariah Carey, but I didn't go in, because I'm horrified by you selling our pride. So, get it together, and we're going to do a party for the Hollywood sign.
Thank you, Richard. Chi-
Thank you.
You're our next speaker, and you will be followed by Danielle Wilson.
All right, after that. Mayor Shine, Mayor Pretam Erickson, Councilmembers Byers, Heilman, and Meister. First, thank you all for, I just wanted to introduce myself, I'm Chido Ebunaway, or affectionately known as Chi. I am a diversity, equity, and inclusion facilitator strategist, I'm also the board chair of the One Archives Foundation. We have really relied on the support from the city of West Hollywood. And more importantly, I am a proud resident of this incredible diverse community for almost 20 years. So, thank you for the opportunity to serve this community. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Chi. Our next speaker, I don't see Danielle in chambers anymore.
I think she may be on Zoom. Is she on Zoom?
Okay. So, I will remove Danielle. Jonathan, I still see you, so come on up, you'll have 90 seconds.
Hey, Councilmembers, thank you so much for the reappointment. I wanted to, you know, I'm comfortable going at the end, I originally didn't put the agenda number that I wanted to speak to, but everything went well, and we had some great advocates, and I just want to say thank you again for that. In addition, I want to just request and just reiterate that we want to appoint the remaining people for the Social Justice Advisory Board. I think there are three key areas of focus that we want to go back to, which is economic development, public safety, housing and homelessness, and services. The other piece is, some of the things that were profound are some of the things that we want to be known for, around step-by-step business guide for small businesses, also thinking about incubator programs, want to get to work on increasing the number of BIPOC people and leadership for businesses that are currently with Hollywood. We also want to make sure that we're partnering with the Sheriff's Department effectively. That's in line with what Robert Luna wants to do. Also, I want to make sure that we expand legal services, we want to prioritize our hiring of diverse staff for helping with homelessness and, and poverty. And then also, we want to help, help kind of unleash the power around the fight against homelessness. So, with that said, I just want to say thank you again for supporting our work, and we want to get to start it as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jonathan. The next individual signing up to speak is Catherine Quinn. Okay, Natalie M. Okay, Natalie M. is here, she's fighting her way out of here.
Hi, good evening, City Councilmembers. On behalf of myself, the community, and local businesses, I just wanted to talk about the issue of public safety and vandalism. I currently work at Labo M., and I'm the marketing and event coordinator there, and I came to speak to you today because I am concerned about the safety of the community, especially as being an employee at Labo M. And recently, about a month ago, we had the armed robbery, and ever since then, we had five vandalism situations that happened. And I just, as a community member, and as like a young female, and, and working in West Hollywood, I just kind of want to see more of a change when it comes to the homelessness situation. I know you guys already have a whole action plan in place, but I feel like yet still problems are happening, and they're not going away as, you know, as fast as we would like them to. In addition to that, I feel like the homelessness brings a lot of crime and vandalism, and that is costly for local businesses, because we have to pay, pay for it out of our own pocket. And in addition to the high minimum wage, it's just, it's very hard financially for local businesses to make it in this economy, and those are all factors that contribute to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Our next speaker, and I apologize if I mispronounced your last name, is Carmen Ballasue.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Carmen Ballasue. As a proud manager of Labo M., the general manager of Labo M., I stand before you to shed some light on the pressing issues that has been affecting not only in our establishment, but also the overall safety and prosperity of West Hollywood. One of our primary concern at Labo M. is the safety of our area. Recent incidents of vandalism and the presence of homeless individuals trespassing on our restaurant patio over and over again have become a significant, sorry, significant challenge for us. These incidents not only pose a threat to the well-being of our staff and guests, but also result in substantial financial losses for our business, with thousands of dollars being spent every week on repairs and damages that happen. Our staff members are the backbone of our restaurant, and they are working tirelessly to create a warm and enjoyable environment for our valued guests. They deserve to work in an environment where their safety is not compromised. Similarly, our guests who choose to dine at Labo M. should be able to do so without any concerns of their well-being. In the past six months, we have seen a significant increase in the case of vandalism on our premises, and more so in the past two months. We had attempted break-ins, our outside furniture damaged, our wall of flowers destroyed, our valet's podium broken into, and many other incidents. At the same time, we had the armed robbery that my colleague took place, so I would really appreciate your help to help us with the trespassing.
Thank you, I appreciate, thank you. Kayla Smith. And Kayla will be followed by Toru Toyokawa.
Hello, City Council and Mayor Shane, thank you for your time today. As you've heard from some of my colleagues, we don't feel safe at Labo M., so I feel like we've kind of gotten the gist of that, but I'm here to speak about block by block specifically. They're currently losing their role in Santa Monica as a security. They are not trained to deal with today's challenges. However, they are being replaced by covered siccs, who are currently providing additional security services for Beverly Hills. They are empathetic in their approach with the homeless community with a commitment to full transparency. Also, this ensures that all of the agencies will be held accountable. Here in West Hollywood, those same agencies, as well funded with taxpayers millions of dollars, have no mandate for accountability. This is the same superficial thinking as the decision to increase our minimum wage to the highest in the world. The actions of the City Council are resulting in the exact opposite of helping our small business community. You should take into consideration the profitability of various businesses before coming up with this wage policy. You have made it more difficult for small businesses to survive, especially restaurants like Labo M., who have been a pillar in this community for over 32 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla. Toru Toyokawa to be followed by Andres Michael.
Hello, good evening, City Councilmembers, City officials. My name is Toru Toyokawa from Labo M. I wanted to ask for support and urgency for approving the outside, permanent outside dining of Labo M. We originally submitted a letter to intend to have the permanent outside dining on August 26th of 2020, and October 27th of 2020, we submitted our first arch- our first architectural plan. And then since then, we have been doing back and forth for two years. And we've, every answer from the city took two to three months. Maybe the city was understaffed at that time. But we answered all the letter responses requested by building and safety, engineering, urban design, addressing sound concerns. So we've configured the height of the walls, parking credits, restroom requirements. We answered all of that. And then two years later, January 24th, we met with the Urban Design and Architectural Studio, Mr. Rick Abramson, with the new set of the requests from the city that we need to now recess our walls. We managed to answer this, but not only this, we received enforcement letter from code enforcement showing the outside dining from the COVID era, which has social distancing. And we have yet to have answer from the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Toru. Your time is up. Thank you.
Move forward. We need to move forward. It's been more than three years.
Your time is up, sir. Thank you.
Andres Michael. Galore Amos, or Amos. Wes Sigmiller. Lucia Z.
Good evening, council. My name is Lucia Zelenka. I'm a resident of West Hollywood for past five years. And let me tell you, I'm very disappointed by the decline of this neighborhood. That from month to month, there is more homeless people and more violence on the street. I can, I couldn't even imagine. Now, this is the first time on, when I'm attempting this council meeting, and I see how much time is wasted on your pet projects, on your gardens, on your scooters, and other things. Meanwhile, you have people living on the streets in their own feces. You should be ashamed of yourself and get your priorities straight. And I would like to see how the money are properly spent for the homelessness, where they are going. There is no accountability for it. And I would love to see it as a, as a taxpayer who is paying way too much money for that. I don't see any, any outcome, any good outcome for the homeless people. So I would like to see some, something good coming out of it. I don't want to see any more homeless people, no more violence on the streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rick Watts, to be followed by Ty Geltmaker.
Thank you, Rick Watts, City of West Hollywood. I want to thank you for, for largely finishing the, the appointments process tonight. And I hope that moving forward in a year and a half, over that time, that process can be efficiently accelerated somewhat, because we're now, what, I think, seven months since the last election races were, were decided. And it'll take another month before those, those folks are, are actually on boarded onto the boards and commissions for which they have been selected. On a personal note, I want to welcome our new members in the Disabilities Advisory Board, and I look forward to working with them. And in, this is, this is part of the democratic process, and I, I want to laud everyone who applied, whether or not they were actually selected tonight, because this is how democracy works. Sometimes we agree, sometimes we disagree. And, and that's how hopefully we arrive at, at good decisions. On a personal note, I want to welcome particularly Logan Latham. He is finishing up a very long master's program at UCLA. Will be working with, with the VA, with, with disabled veterans in the coming months. And those have been blind spots in our board for quite a while. And then lastly, Chair Lee Walkup of the Senior Advisory Board, I hope we wish him well. He will be getting a new shoulder, his fifth joint replacement, coming Friday.
Thank you. Ty Geltmaker is our last speaker in chambers, and then we will move to our speakers in Zoom. Go ahead, Ty.
I'm here not to complain, but to pay tribute. In case it hasn't already been noted and mentioned, that this past week, Benita Roth, born and raised in West Hollywood, died in her early 60s of a very serious sudden cancer. She was the author of The Life and Death of Act Up LA: Anti-AIDS Activism in Los Angeles. Forgive me if I cry. From the 1980s to the 2000s, she went around Los Angeles 20 some years after us old guys. I'm 71, almost 80 now. And she found all of us, and she rounded us up. And yeah, she forced many of us to cry in our living rooms and to tell what we were feeling and what we knew. Many of us had written about this crisis back then, as well as putting our bodies on the front line. But Benita was, in addition to being a West Hollywood native, of Russian family, and I think she has one surviving sister. She was a SUNY Purchase New York Professor of Sociology and Gender Studies. She and I had a lot of falling outs and disagreements, as was wont for ACT UP and for any social movement. But I was shocked to hear of her death, and I'm really sad.
Thank you, Ty. Thank you. We will now move to our public commenters in Zoom.
Our first public comment this evening is Adam Darvish, to be followed by Wes Sigmiller. Adam, you will have two, or 90 seconds. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Schein, and Mayor Portem, Erickson, and council members and staff. I changed my topic after I heard about Esther, good friend, and were really sad about it. As a healthcare worker, I met through, met Esther through Mayor Schein two years ago, and, and was amazed the first time that I, that I met Esther on her wheelchair, and, and her passion and perseverance, and love for humanity and service even impressed me more as I got to know her more. I also helped her to receive her cyanide. About a year ago, she had some care, care issues during pandemic, by calling management and connecting Detroit people. I would never forget Esther and her love for animals, although I never got to taste her deviled eggs, but that I hear about it all the time. I hope that council members would honor Esther by having a plaque at the park or memorial for her, because she's true, a true example of a great human. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Adam. Our next speaker is Wes Sigmiller, to be followed by Jamie Francis. Wes, you will have 90 seconds. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you folks hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you to the previous speakers for uplifting their stories with their friends. And I'm sorry for your loss. I hope everyone in chambers and on council and everything, I hope you're all doing well. My name is Wes. I'm a resident, and I'm the co-founder of Free WeHo Coalition at freeweho.com. I'm here to talk about something that's weighing on my heart tonight. So last year, Mr. Erickson and I worked closely together to pass the Massage Parlor Outreach Initiative through a very slim city council vote. And the vision behind this was to provide much-needed services to immigrants, massage workers in West Hollywood in a language that they could understand. Firstly, I want to thank you, Seppi and John Erickson, for voting in favor of this initiative last year. Unfortunately, despite my request for follow-up in the year since, I recently discovered, like today, that the application process had been completed and basically failed without my knowledge or notification, and no service provider found. Meanwhile, the community took matters into their own hands and initiated a massage worker outreach pilot project in Chinatown with funds that we raised independently. So let's just be real, this issue goes beyond simple miscommunication, right, guys? As an activist, I can take some disrespect on the chin, and as politicians yourselves, you've probably grown a thick skin, you know? So however, what's really at stake here is the people who would have benefited from these programs. They're the ones who lose out due to these distracting machinations. While we may disagree on certain things, you guys, I'm, and we're not the best of the friends.
Thank you, Wes. Your time is up. Thank you.
I believe it's important to find common ground and work together through the years that all of us have.
Thank you, Wes. Our next speaker is Jamie Francis, to be followed by Danny Hang. Jamie, you will have 90 seconds. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Good evening, council. I just wanted to mention, and I'm sorry about talking earlier, but I wanted to emphasize the lack of affordable housing and the dismal, abysmal reality of this city, either dealing with homelessness and the adject failure of, you know, not enforcing affordable housing where there should have been two decades ago. And now we're confronting with developments and people waiting indefinitely and perpetuity for housing that's not even built. And now you have to come up with 3,000 units of affordable housing, and you will not achieve that with 17 units, or 14 units, or 10 units, or three units. It's not feasible, and you have less than seven years to achieve that, which is unfathomable. You, along with Beverly Hills, are going to confront that, and the state is going to have to deal with this. You can't get exemptions or extensions anymore. You've been in existence for 40 years. It's something that is a rude awakening and a reality check that you have to accomplish, and predecessors did not do that substantially. They should have addressed that. Furthermore, the public safety concern is valid among West residents. It's not getting better, it's getting worse. So the higher the income and the influx of people with money can do these illegal Airbnb's, and yet there was nothing that was addressed. The inspectors didn't do anything, the code enforcement didn't do anything, and here you have basically something that now cannot be eliminated, that is basically a curse to this city. And it's because of adject failure of not enforcing it.
Thank you, Jamie.
So I'm very resentful.
Thank you, Jamie. Your time is up. Thank you. Our next speaker is Danny Hang, to be followed by our last speaker, Danielle Wilson. Danielle, you'll have 90 seconds. Please press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Portem, and Honorable Council. My name is Danny Hang, and I'm a resident of West Hollywood. My apologies, I was in the chambers earlier, but I had to leave just a bit ago. I wanted to congratulate the city on yet another successful prize. It was a memorable and enjoyable weekend, thanks to the hard work of the council, its committees, and various subcommittees. I especially want to thank city staff for their countless powers in organizing and coordinating the celebrations. It wouldn't have happened without all their hard work. Special shout out to Director of Community Safety, Danny Rivas, and Neighborhoods and Business Safety Vision Manager, Vito Adamainis, and their department were pretty much working around the clock the whole weekend to make sure that the weekend was safe and enjoyable for all. I know that some troubling events have, happened over that weekend, which should have never happened. But I want to acknowledge Mayor Schein for swiftly bringing stakeholders together, including the LGBTQ+ community leaders, the district attorney, and the sheriff, for an open dialogue and discussion of community concerns, leading to understanding, learning, improvement, and healing. And as a result, the sheriff will be instituting a post-approved LGBTQ+ training department, training department-wide, and engaging quarterly meetings with trans community leaders. There's a new sheriff in town, so this is the first small step, but certainly it won't be the last. And lastly, thank you, council, for keeping the micro-mobility program. You have not only slowed the sea down for safety concerns, but you also got a better deal for the city. And that better deal means a better deal for all of us, that benefits the entire community. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Danny. And our final speaker tonight is Danielle Wilson. Danielle, you'll have 90 seconds. Star six to unmute. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Danielle Wilson, City of West Hollywood, and Political Coordinator with United Care Local 11. I want to commend the city for yet another beautiful pride that was truly intersectional and inclusive. Our members got to march in the parade with Supervisor Lindsay Horvath, which was super fun and important for workers to be able to participate in such an important event. I also want to speak in support of the productive conversations Mayor Schein convened with the Sheriff's Department, along with community leaders and elected offices, to work towards our goal of ensuring that everyone in our community feels safe. Things that have not existed up until this point, as Danny pointed out, like an LGBTQ advisory group, quarterly meetings between the sheriff and trans community, and increased training standards within the Sheriff's Department that I'm sure we'll hear more about over time. And as a constituent, I'm grateful that the right wing forces that are trying to chip away at these ideals that we have fought for, for so long in Santa Monica have not come home to root here in West Hollywood due to the strong and dedicated leadership of this council. There should be no question about that. On the contrary, I continue to be proud that our city continues to lead the way on so many structural issues that impact working people and people of color, from wages to tenant protections to public safety. This city continues to be a model for the rest of the region. And I'll be curious what these businesses say when LA raises the minimum wage to $25 in the next few months. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Mayor, that was our last speaker. Thank you. Well, we will now move to, our city manager has a, some updated information.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to respond to some of the questions regarding the consent items from Councilmember Meister. The first was item 2Z, the agreement for the school crossing guards services. The additional crossing guards were needed for an additional entrance and exit that was activated due to the COVID-related precautions. The additional entrance and exit has been beneficial to the schools. They want to continue those operations, and so they need to keep the guards, but we'll continue to work with them and monitor to see that it's continuing to be beneficial. The other item was 2FF, and that was the memorandum of agreements for the Bologna Creek watershed. The item authorizes a contract with LA County and the cities of Santa Monica, Beverly Hills, and Culver City. West Hollywood's participation in these agreements with these agencies is instrumental to, because stormwater affects our, our shared watershed area. That's a successful way to achieve regulatory compliance is by working with our partner agencies. We only pay a small percentage of the cost of compliance in our watershed, and so the cost of the, and the cost of the agreement is covered by our Measure W special revenue funds, which are part of a parcel tax. So overall, the agreements have been effective and beneficial.
Thank you. David, can you, we've heard from La Bohem that they've been vandalized quite a few times. And can you have Captain Mulder, talk to Captain Mulder and Danny about stepping up patrols around their restaurant, and maybe meeting with them to see what can be done to increase their safety?
Yes, and I believe Captain Mulder did meet with them at the location and walked the area with them, but I will talk with them and.
And I know that in the past, we've had, we've asked them to put a car in areas to deter people who might want to commit crimes. Maybe that, since they've had five incidents, maybe that might be helpful for a time.
Yeah.
Mayor Portem?
It would also be helpful for us, because this is the first time I'm hearing of five vandalism incidents at one located business. That seems pretty targeted to me. So in our daily briefings from the Sheriff's Department, if there is, well, whatever it is, if we're getting, if you've been vandalized five times, that's not good, one, right? Number one. But two, we have no idea that that's happening, because we're not being told. So what I'm trying to say is, one is enough. One is too many, right? So we need to be updated on that. And this is an ongoing communications issue that we are dressed in our budget and everything like that. But that's the stuff that we need to hear about, so that way, just like with your bathroom permitting that you, I, I saw, I think it was on Twitter or something that we asked you about, we can take action because they can get there quickly. So if a business is being vandalized five times, it's not okay, but we need to know about that right away.
We certainly can let you all know, but it was more important to make sure that the sheriff knows, and Captain Mulder did go out and meet with them. But we'll definitely keep you all informed as well.
All right, so we have council member comments next. Who would like to go first? Councilmember Meister, would you like to? Oh, Councilmember Heilman.
I'm prepared to go first, because I might fade before.
Got it, okay.
Just addressing the issues with La Bohem, I would ask Jackie and Oscar if they could meet with the individuals from La Bohem and set up a meeting to follow up to make sure we're assisting them through the permitting process. And, and I know that you're very good at trying to get rid of delays and, and cut through red tape. So I would. at trying to get rid of delays and cut through red tape, so I would ask you to do that with respect to their request. Also, on the issue of public safety, I would say to my colleagues, it's not that unusual if they're dealing with frequent homeless situation. I see it every day. When I walk, there are businesses with little alcoves and the doorways where homeless people are routinely there, routinely, you know, unfortunately relieving themselves there, and that causes a problem for the business community. I do, I'm going to bring forward another item to address some of those issues, but one of the things that we need to do is make sure that we have letters of agency on file, so that the sheriffs can address people who are trespassing on private property. I wanted to also echo the thanks to everyone involved with our Pride festivities, JJLA, our event staff, in fact, the entire city team, the Sheriff's Department, as well as the Fire Department, who were working around the clock to try to make the event a successful one, and I would say that they succeeded. I wanted to give direction on Item 2GG, the roadway warning lights that were finalized. I've observed people, and I don't think they're working. I see people, they're not looking at the street, they're looking up ahead, so they don't always notice the lights flashing in the roadway. So, I hope that that can be looked at. And then I wanted to thank my colleagues for supporting 2NN. It's an item on addressing some of the business community's concerns and the vacancies that we have in the city. I've worked with Laura Beery from our Economic Development Department, and we will be bringing this back with additional recommendations, and I look forward to both the staff and the city council's input. And I also wanted to report that I attended the Homelessness Subcommittee. That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Heilman. Councilmember Meister?
Thank you, Mayor. So, let's see, we'll start with attendance. Represented the District 41 at SCAG's Energy and Environment Committee and Regional Council Meeting, attended various Pride activities, and appreciate staff's hard work on that. Also participated in the Pops and Parts Symposium, the Juneteenth Flag-Raising Ceremony, Chamber Meet and Greet with Sheriff Luna, and the Owls Neighborhood Watch Meeting. I did want to talk about a consent calendar item. I have way too many comments for right now. This is Item 2G on the general plan update, and specifically on the items that there were no action. These were items that we had put in the general plan, or should say, former council put in the general plan in 2011, and there were a number of items that I was interested in seeing move forward. So, what I'll do is I will get in touch with staff, and instead of reading my 15 comments, and see where we go from here on that. And just wanted to make a few announcements. Tuesday, June 27th, at 7:00 PM, Historic Preservation Commission is having a special meeting. They had to move their meeting to tomorrow because we took today's time. HPC is typically on the fourth Monday of the month, and due to scheduling issues, this meeting was moved to Tuesday. It will be held at Plummer Park Community Centers, Room 5 and 6, and public hearings will be held for cultural resource designation of the buildings at 1150 Vista Street, also known as Fiesta Hall, and 1200 Vista Street, known as the Plummer Park Community Clubhouse, or Great Hall, Long Hall. And also, there will be a hearing on a certificate of appropriateness for a new internally lit billboard at 9009 Sunset Boulevard, which is the Roxy Theater, and the conversion of a static billboard to a new digital and internally lit billboard at 915 Sunset Boulevard, which is the Rainbow Bar and Grill. On Wednesday, June 28th, there's an in-person neighborhood community meeting for 1238-1244 North Larrabee Street. It will be held at WeHo Park Aquatic and Recreation Center at 8750 El Tovar at 6:00 PM. And also on Wednesday, we have the updating of the city's Hazard Mitigation Plan Community Meeting. That will also be at 6:00 PM at the West Hollywood Park Aquatic and Recreation Center. Maybe you can get from one meeting to the next at the Dohini Room. This is your chance to provide input on the city's Hazard Mitigation Plan, which needs to be updated every five years. And that's it for me. Thank you.
I'll go ahead and jump in.
Yes, please.
I'll start with a few comments and attendance. For my comments, just, I'm incredibly grateful to everyone who made Pride Month the memorable, safe, inclusive, beautiful celebration it was. Thank you so much for the memories. Thank you to my colleagues for supporting Item 200, the resolution in support of our striking writers, and thank you to the members of the Writers Guild for attending our meeting tonight. I will be seeing you on the picket line soon. Thank you to the members of the Playhouse Design Steering Committee. Those three meetings went very fast, but they were very incredible, and that process will be coming to, ahead to us very soon. Just want to thank the mayor for being a part of that steering committee and supporting me as chair. It was a really amazing experience, and I honestly am going to miss those meetings. Two meetings, I'll say a few things that I attended, and then I have one more thing I'd like to add at the end. There were many meetings attended since our last council meeting, but the one I wanted to note was the first board meeting of the Los Angeles County Affordable Housing Solutions Agency, otherwise known as La Casa. So, for those who don't know, La Casa is a newly created countywide agency that was created through legislation championed by Senator and now Congresswoman Sydney Comlager, that established a regional housing agency tasked with preserving, protecting, and producing affordable housing throughout the region. I will continue to be attending those meetings, as I'm honored to share that I've been appointed by Supervisor Lindsay Horvath as her alternate to that board. So, I thank her for trusting in me and my leadership in this opportunity to serve our region and do the good work of establishing what this agency will be, its purview, its work. I also am on the Bylaws Committee, so have a couple extra meetings to be attending, thanks to our supervisor, but very honored and happy to be tasked with this challenge of figuring out how we bring more affordable housing on a regional level. Just wanted to note that. Finally, I wanted to take just a moment to congratulate one of our newest LGBTQ commissioners, my appointee, Amber Whittington. She was recognized by the California Legislative LGBTQ Caucus as a 2023 Pride Honoree. I wanted to uplift her for, you know, that recognition at the statewide level as she comes into our community and to serve on this commission. And finally, I just want to acknowledge the community member who brought forth an additional adjournment tonight for Benita Roth and add that to our list of adjournments. So, thank you so much for uplifting Benita's memory tonight, giving us something to look into and read more about, and we'll honor Benita with an adjournment. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Byers, for doing that. That's a wonderful book, Ty, and so I did not know that she had passed. Meetings I have attended, Cynthia Street Neighborhood Watch Meeting, Contract Cities Municipal Seminar, where I moderated a panel on development, the WeHo Mishka Festival and Russian Community Awards, the Community Cats, Traps, Neuter, and Return Event, the Harvey Milk Day Event, Leading from the Left Combating Antisemitism that was put on by Zionist, the Meth and Fentanyl Crisis Virtual Panel. Great job, Mayor. I'm, I'm sorry, I will never do that again. Councilmember, I was staring at you, and then I'm looking at her. So anyways, great job, Councilmember Meister. I thought it was a much-needed panel. As we could hear from the public comment today, more needs to be done, so I thought you did a very, very good job on that. I swore in most of the dab, if I'm not mistaken. Rick, you'll correct me if I'm wrong. The Clean Power Legislative Committee Meeting, the Contract Cities E-Board Meeting, the mayor's Pride Party, and WeHo Pride Events. Enough has been said about it, but it was successful. Your Pride Party was great, giving the key to the city to the sisters, and the work that you did with all of the Dodger stuff was very well received, and thank you, as well as the work that you did to bring community together after the incident. It's much appreciated by all of us. I much, I thank you very much. I attended the, also, the CPA Board of Directors Meeting, the Beverly Hills Pride, Rainbow Labs Youth Council Graduation, where I presented proclamations, the Emerald Village Event at Koma, the Business License Commission, where I swore in several members, Contract City, another Contract Cities Board Meeting. They seem to have a lot of meetings. I attended the demo reveal of the Serv robot Marcia, thanks to Scott or Scoot for designing that. I've seen her a bunch of times around the hood. The LA County Elected Official LGBT Convening, the Public Safety Commission Meeting, where I swore in people, the Liability Trust Fund and Claims Board Meeting, my first one, and boy, was that a fun time. Panelist, I was a panelist for the Youth of Covenant House Pride Event, the Owls Neighborhood Watch Meeting. I played in and spoke at the Pride Pickleball Tournament. And just as a friendly reminder to the four people that beat me and my partner at the Pride Pickleball Tournament, WeHo Parking Services will be finding you. I had my Saturday, I did threaten that, I will say that much as a joke, but it was fun. They were great. They really walloped us, so that was fun. I had my Saturdays in the Plummer Park Event. I attended the Queer Book Event on Saturday, as well as the Lesbian Speaker Series Event, and Summer Sounds Kickoff. It's a lot. Okey-doke. Moving on. Orange Grove and Fountain is having a lot of traffic incidents as people try to go north of the street or make a left-hand turn. So, if the traffic engineers could kind of look at that, I don't know if it's possible to add the ballards where you can force people to go right onto Fountain, or whatever a community meeting could be done around that, because it is becoming a growing concern. I want to thank the people that have brought that to my attention. If we could just get an email or an update about the Fountain Avenue Pilot Program, I would rather have more information out there than less than it just starting, because I think that's an important conversation. Additionally, I'm really excited to announce that many people know that the state budget, which has a final agreement with the governor and the state Assembly and Senate just made agreements, has $1.15 million for the log cabin in it. And that is great news for the fives of you out there watching till the bitter end, but this is going such a far way with that log cabin. And I want to thank this entire council and everyone that took those meetings, that went up to Sacramento and looked very sternly at our elected officials and told them why it was such a regional force for good. And I'm just so thankful that we not only bought the log cabin, but now we're going to be restoring and rehabilitating it and making it AD accessible. And it's just really great to see the state prioritize that. And so, big thanks to Assemblymembers Abur, who led this effort, as well as Senator Ben Allen, and we're still waiting on Congressman Schiff, as well as hopefully some county monies that could come in. So, let's just get it paid for, David, and make your life easier, so then when we ask you for other things, your life is much simpler. Additionally, I won't read the names of the people who beat me in the Pride Pickleball Tournament. Nevertheless, I have them in my notes, so I'll spare them that. I want to congratulate my nephew Drew, who hit his 12th homerun this season. He is a baller, and like all good uncles, I paid him to do it, so he got $100 from me on Saturday, and so that was the deal. So, congratulations, Drew. I wish I could be there, but I wasn't. And additionally, I just want to echo my, the public, as well as what has been shared among my colleagues around the Juneteenth event. Much has been said around it. I think this event should be given to the Social Justice Task Force to be handled, and it sounds like that's going to happen. Also, I think this event should actually be on the holiday, Juneteenth, instead of a Friday. I know it's hard, but like with Memorial Day, or Veterans Day, or whatever other holiday we have, I just think we need to set it and disremember it. I understand that's a lot on staff, but, you know, I want to apologize for not being there. I had a Planned Parenthood event. That's my day job, so I sadly had to be there. We didn't get much notice about when to be there, but thank you for everyone that came out. Thank you for making it heard. I'm glad the Social Justice Task Force, the Social Justice Advisory Board is going to be moving forward with their meetings now. And, you know, we always can do better. We must do better, and this is just the way in which we remind ourselves to continue doing it. That's it.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Since our last meeting, I attended the 75th anniversary of the Independence of Israel at the Saban Theater, the California Contract Cities Annual Seminar, all of our WeHo Pride events. WeHo Pride was spectacular. So, thank you for everyone involved in WeHo Pride. I attended the ILTM Proud Opening Reception, the Westside Cogs Meeting, the Pops and Parts Symposium, the City Selection Committee Meeting, and I had SIPs with SEPI this, in June. On May 25th, Every Table celebrated the grand opening of their newest location right in the heart of West Hollywood. Every Table is a mission-driven food company that fights for food justice, makes fresh nutritious food accessible and affordable for all, with over 40 locations across Los Angeles. This new location is perfect for grabbing a quick breakfast, lunch, or stocking up for the week on budget-friendly, ready-to-eat meals, juices, snacks, and more, starting at just $6. To order online or read more, visit everytable.com. The West Hollywood Every Table is located at 8717 Santa Monica Boulevard, West Hollywood, California, and 90069, and opens Monday through Friday from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Saturday 11:00 to 3:00, and Sunday 11:00 to 6:00. And they're looking forward to expanding their hours soon. I wanted to thank, I want to thank Councilmember Byers for 200 with regard to supporting the writers that are on strike. They are, without the writers, nothing could be created, and so I really hope that, I stand with them, and I hope that the studios really come to the table to respect them with the demands that they have. I want to just, there was a public commenter that spoke about us not spending money or time on homelessness, and that is just absolutely not the case. And I'm sure she just didn't realize that tonight, we allocated millions of dollars to 24/7 Behavioral Health Mobile Crisis Response Units, and that is in addition to a lot more money that we spend on providing care and services for our unhoused folks. Homelessness is a, there are, I believe, what, 70,000 unhoused people in LA County? And compared to our neighboring cities, our numbers are actually a lot lower, but that doesn't mean we won't and do not do a lot, and we do a lot. And often, our residents and some folks don't understand or don't see the things that we do do. So, I encourage you all, I was, I served on the Homelessness Subcommittee up until this last year, since I got into office. I encourage you to attend our Homelessness Subcommittee to really learn about all of the services we provide and their successes. And as far as unhoused folks that don't have a place to use the bathroom and do relieve themselves in public, I would ask that we all really, truly have compassion for them, because they don't have bathrooms that are open after a business closes, and a lot of businesses won't even let them in. So, where else are they going to go? And because of that, Councilmember Meister and I brought forward an item for staff to create 24/7 public bathrooms in our city. So, I would like to encourage staff to come back with that item to us. I'm sure it's coming soon, so that we can move that forward. And Councilmember Heilman, I just wanted to, in addition to the, what you said, just add that, too. I, Ty, I'm sorry for your loss. She's, yeah, our loss. I didn't know her. She sounds like an incredible woman. Yeah.
I just say, I take no pleasure in the messiness. It is not my ego. It is our loss.
Right. So, with that said, it is, I think I got everything? So, with that said, it is, I think I got everything, it is, oh, I put away my gavel, this one. It is 11:40, I can't see 48, and we are adjourned to our next, next council meeting, which is June 17th, at 6:00 PM.